Thank you.
You persevered.
At the end of February.
Okay, we're calling the July 22, 2021 Planning Board Regular Session to Order. Secretary, may we have a roll call?
Chairman LaFaro.
Present.
Vice Chair Finity is not here, correct?
Right.
Secretary is here, Board Member Zuccarelli.
Present.
Board Member Long.
Present.
Board Member Catalinato.
Present.
We have a quorum, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you. Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Do we have any minutes?
Yes, May 13.
May 13?
Yes.
May have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions? Five in favor, one absent. Okay, moving right along, we're going to start with number five. Anthony, certain solar.
So you remember, we have an application, pending application, property in entered by zone, the vacant property in the LI40 zoning district, for which we did a pre-submission conference, and then subsequently had a formal application for a battery storage facility over 600 kilowatt-hours as a special exception use. We previously deemed the application incomplete pending the submission of some items. The special exception criteria have a lot of submission requirements. One of the items that requires, required is an operations and maintenance manual. And I spoke with the applicant's attorney, Anthony Curcio, who's here today. There's apparently an issue with the information, that information that the applicant wants, that needs to provide, and there seems to be some type of proprietary information nondisclosure agreement or something, some legal issue that they're being cautious about submitting the information. I spoke to Kathleen about it and Janice. Ultimately, we'd like to very quickly have a meeting with the applicant's attorney, with our attorney, myself and Janice, to see exactly how we deal with this, you know. If it's information that we shouldn't be requiring, then we need to know it, but we want to resolve it. And so I don't have that information yet. We still need to sit down with the applicant. So I wasn't going to recommend that we deem the application complete at this point until we rectify that issue. And I know the applicant wants to get this done. I know they're under deadlines for grants and everything else. My hesitation to schedule it with the intent of having this meeting prior to the hearing on the 26th is that this is the first time we're getting this, an application under these new special exception criteria. So I'm a little uncomfortable with recommending to the planning board that we deem it complete until this matter is resolved. I've been meeting with several applicants, some other ones that are going to be coming in, and I just want to make sure we get this right.
Right.
And, you know, so that's just my, you know, opinion about it. I know the applicant is here, but, you know.
Well, it's that, and the legal department has to review some of these documents to make sure that we're in.
Yeah, it's an interesting issue. I know the applicant would probably like to be heard on this. We did speak prior, just before the meeting today. You know, obviously, as you know, when we take in applications, they're all subject to FOIL, and we always have to comply with FOIL to the extent possible. There is an exemption in FOIL for trade secrets or information that would be hurtful or harmful to, in a competitive nature, to the supplier. So we really have to figure out if that falls within this category. It's looking like it does. We just don't have the information at the moment. So I know the applicant would like you to schedule it. Subject to us figuring this out. And as Anthony indicated, because this is the first application we're receiving under these new special exception standards, it may be that we either amend the town code or shouldn't be asking for this in the first place. If we do ask for it, we put in, we mimic that FOIL language and say, except for that information that qualifies as trade secrets or proprietary information. I understand that the applicant has a nondisclosure agreement or confidentiality agreement with their vendor, so it's a little bit tricky. I appreciate the position that they're in. They want to move forward because of the NYSERTA grants. So at the end of the day, it's up to the board if you want to deem it complete or not, but that's the issue we're dealing with.
Right, well, I certainly understand your position. Do you want to speak to us in some ways? Because we've heard our counsel.
She pretty much mimicked her.
You have to come to the, come to the board.
And Jackie, I also have some comments.
Okay.
For the applicant, Anthony Curcio, Brown Oldman, Delio, 530 Broad Hall Road, Melville, New York, 11747. Counsel and Mr. Trezza kind of mimicked what we discussed this morning. I really have nothing else to add other than if we do, you know, I, it's, we did sign a nondisclosure agreement. The manufacturer is Tesla, so they have deep pockets, so God forbid we do break that. We are exposing our client to a lot of litigation, so we're just trying to be very careful here. So I think a meeting between myself, Anthony, Trezza, counsel, and whoever else needs to be involved, I think is warranted.
Is wise.
At the same time, we'd like to possibly be scheduled tentatively. I know you don't really do that, but with the circumstance here, and it's, you know, first case of its kind before the town, we'd like, you know, some flexibility if possible due to the timelines we're under.
Well, we'll get to it as soon as we can, but we need to do it, I think, within the guidelines that we're looking at.
Okay.
Okay, I think we have a couple of questions, Gloria.
Sure.
I'm a little closer to this than maybe the rest of the board, because I'm also involved with the Sustainability Committee here. And I know that's, the information that we're asking for is in the town code. Is that something we copied from another municipality that's, so that it's?
That's the question I asked Janice Share, the developer of this legislation.
Yes.
Why do, what's the purpose of this provision? Why do we have it in there? Was it just taken from another municipality? Or is there a real reason for it? And can we, can we tailor that reason so that we can accomplish both goals? This all kind of happened this morning, so we don't have that information yet. Janice would be part of that meeting, though.
Okay, well, then, yeah, because I, I know this is the first applicant we have for this legislation, so I don't want to, I don't want to harm your ability to move forward with, especially because of the NYSERTA grants. But by the same token, that conversation, I think, among the folks you mentioned, will be, hopefully, resolved quickly for everybody.
Yes, we would appreciate moving forward with a meeting as quickly as possible so we can go resolve that issue and move forward.
We'll get you on an agenda.
Yeah, I was gonna say.
No, I don't think we want to do that. We don't know when they're going to have a conversation. So I was, deem it incomplete.
Well, we don't have to deem it incomplete. We previously deemed it incomplete.
Okay.
We don't have to take any action then, but I, we.
We intend to meet before then.
We intend to meet next week, is what we tried to chart to do here, next week.
So you'll put it on the schedule for 12?
I'll put it on two weeks. I don't have a problem with it.
Okay, so two weeks. That's what I was going to suggest.
August 12.
Okay, so if we do resolve this issue by the next meeting, will that still enable us to get on the calendar for the 26th, or is that not a possibility?
I think you'd have to do the 9th, September 9th, because of the posting and mailing requirement.
Yeah, right, okay.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so no action on that. Anthony, we're moving along with you, with Thomas and Julie Crowley.
Yep.
Page 37 on the computer.
Page 37. So this was just, I have the aerial up there. This was a two-lot subdivision on Canal Street in Hampton Bay, R15 zoning district. As you can see from the aerial, the surrounding neighborhood, this property had been two lots. It's one of those old filed maps perhaps, or an older subdivision that was laid out. But the properties obviously subsequently merged, and they were looking to re-subdivide it, which requires CBA approval, Health Department, the whole nine yards. We did a pre-application on this. They're just looking to extend it because there's a holdup with, with the Health Department, and actually, because of the pyramid law encroachment with the new lot line, they had to have drawings done in order to show how much cubics were, you know, cubic feet encroachment. So it took a while. We just want to do an extension. It's a little retroactive, but this is a pretty simple subdivision. I don't see any reason why we'd want a new application to come in. So I would just recommend doing the extension, bring it to November 21st of 2021.
November?
21st.
21st, 2021. Okay. Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Robin, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent. Are these the new aerials that we have up?
Yeah, they're nice.
They're very nice.
They, you know, I don't know if mine are, because I use the ones that I keep in the file.
Okay, because Matthew said they've done some new.
Yeah, this one's new. This one's new.
Yeah, Matt?
Yeah, we have 2021, and he was talking about we have a new map.
Unfortunately, the, I'm getting an awful lot of reflection from the light, so I'm not.
Even this one?
That one's a little bit better. That one's really bad.
Okay, well, this is our first time doing it, so we'll get it right. We'll figure it out, but thank you, we appreciate it.
It's better than all that paper flopping around.
For sure, for sure.
Okay, so we're moving on to 89 Scuttle Hall Road.
So this is just going to be an extension of the action deadline to adopt a pre-submission, pre-application report. This is the subdivision where they're actually looking to do a two-lot in the front here, and then to memorialize the subdivision that occurred back here, which is all preserved land. A lot of issues have come up with ag advisory because of potential alienation issue. I've spoken to the applicant, and this board raised some concerns about doing a subdivision and chopping up farmland that's been preserved. It's my understanding, the applicant has asked me for an extension until, I believe, in August 2026. They're probably going to provide the application to eliminate the subdivision in the back. It's my understanding, and that way we only dealing with the front lots.
Are we, did we get a referral from the ag advisory committee?
We did, and then basically what they said was, there appears to be an alienation issue, an alienation issue, so. So I spoke, like I said, I spoke to their counsel, and they agreed that they would do an extension to the 26th.
Okay.
And then we'll see where it goes from there.
Okay. Motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, and second by Craig, all in favor?
Aye.
Five in, opposed, five in favor. No opposed, no extensions, and one absent, I'm sorry.
South Hampton Volunteer Ambulance.
You are?
Number 21.
And the page number, please?
Oh, 164.
Thank you. 11, 164. I'll go written down.
Yeah, this is actually very simple. What happened was, if you remember, we did, we did a site plan approval for the South Hampton Volunteer Ambulance for the property over here in North State. And we actually signed the maps, we did everything on this. What happened was, it's a town project, and we're looking through the resolution, and the resolution asks for a maintenance bond for the landscaping, but as this is a town project, I'm not going to go to the supervisor's office and ask them for a check. So we're just, I'm recommending that we amend the approval to eliminate the bond requirements since it's a town project.
Okay, so we're eliminating the bond.
I didn't mean to put it in there, but.
Motion? Motion by Robin, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor? Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent. Leland Lane Barada Restaurant?
Oh, I probably, it's probably a little bit out of order here.
Number 22.
Hmm, I have this stuff that shows up here. Weird. Huh. What is this stuff?
Yes?
It's weird, I don't know, they're not popping up here. But here, Leland Lane Barada, I could explain this one, it's very simple. You know the Sleepy Shopping Center up on County Route 39, and the crust, there used to be a.
The crust, yeah.
Hat A crust. So it's a new restaurant.
Yes.
So what happened was, there's a site plan approval for that. We approved a restaurant there, actually with a lot more seating than 30, 30 seats they have there, but the Health Department only gave them the 30 seats. So we did a site plan for restaurant for 30 seats. There's, at the end of that building where the restaurant is, there's the covered porch area, the portico, the, whatever you want to call it. They want to do 12 outdoor seats there for the season, 18 in, not to exceed 30. And because the pandemic issue, emergency orders over, they no longer could just go to the fire marshal, they got to come to the planning board. So I was going to recommend the resolution just to approve the outdoor seating, but it's conditioned on a couple of things. Number one, the sign that they put up doesn't conform to this master sign plan. The master sign plan in the resolution is not very detailed, but there are some standards in there that they don't conform, so the condition that I put in there to approve the outdoor seating, and the applicant is aware of it, they met with me, they met with Claire, Marjorie has talked to them, she's on top of all the sign stuff, that they would either have to remove the sign, or they've got to come in with a formal application for the planning board to consider anything that deviates from, from the master.
Where is the sign?
Above the restaurant, yeah.
On the restaurant.
On the restaurant.
I haven't seen it. You don't have any visual of it?
We don't, actually, because we're not approving it. We're not going to approve the sign as proposed.
It's, it's kind of large.
It is.
I had to go to the, to the bank in there this week, so.
Yeah, I do, too, so. So I was just, you know, I understand they're trying to fill in the season here because of everything that happened, so I would just recommend that we approve the outdoor seating for 12 outdoor, and then they could come back and deal with the sign.
Okay.
Yeah, motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent.
And then Metro Storage?
Number 23.
23.
169 in the computer.
And I'm sorry, I promised the next time I'll have my proper stuff, but first time, have a little, couple of little bugs. But Metro Storage, we did the site plan for this, for the 40,000 square foot mini storage right in Lee Con Court there in Huckahoe. This is just to set the bond. They did the landscaping, they gave me the cost estimate, and a third of that would be $6,667 for a maintenance bond, and that's what I'm recommending for the maintenance bond.
Okay, so this is for the bond. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent.
Well, I got for you today.
You're done, Anthony?
Bye, thank you very much.
It won't be like that next time, sorry.
Okay, so Matthew, then we're going in order with you, so.
Back to the beginning.
Your number four.
Is this the sign?
They are, the sign.
So it's 31 on the computer?
Just one on each page, on each package?
Every page. There's one on each page in each package. I think there's four pages.
Okay. But Gloria can do it later, can't she?
Absolutely.
Yes, so she can participate.
All right.
Okay, so.
200 North McGee Street. This is a two-lot subdivision. If you can see the aerial up on the screen now, it's about an 87,000 square foot parcel.
Can you enlarge it for us?
I sure can.
Is that possible?
How's that?
Good, much better.
Good.
Yeah.
We previously deemed this incomplete back in December of 2020. We were missing some mapping items. There was a common driveway, potential concern with a third parcel, whether or not they were going to be party to the application just due to the layout of the map. So what it looks like now, they're not. They, you know, did some alterations to the map, so this is all wholly within these, this one property. So we pretty much have everything we need to deem this complete. A driveway going up the side on the flag, so we're looking to schedule a hearing for August 26th.
Okay, so it's complete and August 26th hearing.
Yes.
Motion?
Motion.
Motion by Robin, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent. And then you go to?
Number 10, Herbert and Dorothea Palmer.
Herbert and Dorothea Park, and that is?
51.
51 on the computer. Give us a sec.
Absolutely, take your time.
Okay, Matthew?
Sure. This is a revegetation, revegetation application. This property is on Noack Road.
Again, can you enlarge it, please?
Yeah, 224 Noack Road. As you can see, it's a flag lot. So this actually came in from the Building Department. What happened is these, this applicant revegetated on their own ahead of time, so we're just essentially coming back to make sure this is correct, which it is. It did need some supplements, but it's largely the way it's supposed to be. If you can see on this map, I know it's a little big here, but these are the areas where they revegetated, all native appropriate stuff. I did have them come back and add some trees, so I do have a resolution to approve this.
Can we see the aerial again, because that's the most telling?
The aerial, sure. So up in here, they've revegetated along the side here, and then a little bit in the back.
Okay, good.
Am I right?
This works.
It's not bad, right?
Not bad.
Yeah.
Particularly when it's enlarged.
Yeah.
Good.
So let's get the hiccups out, we'll get the hang of it.
So we're approving this revege plan. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent. Matthew, you're going to number 11, Little Noack Path?
Correct.
Number 54 on the computer.
As you can see, this is accessed by a very long flag lot. 220 Little Noack Path, fairly large parcel, 119,000 square feet. They've gone over their 25% limit by about 4,600 square feet, so we do have, it's a little hard to tell on the aerials, but there's a lot of understory that's missing on this one, so that's largely what they're looking to revegetate on this. You can see they're doing some here, and over here, and in the back, pretty much anywhere they can make it up. This plan's fairly large, so I'm going to have to zoom out, but it's substantial, it's appropriate, it's just turned, it's a different view than, than the last one, but all appropriate stuff. Oops, sorry. I don't think you have any questions.
The planting material is substantial?
Yep.
Okay, motion to approve this revege plan?
Motion.
By Robin, second by Gloria, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent. Oh, Matthew.
We're onto the numbers.
Are you done? No, you have number 20?
Number 20.
Paul Scher is the third, and that's 149. Okay.
If you recall, this is an application at Construction for a storage barn for the.
With the portico?
Yes, this is the one, 1,200 square feet. It's got some outdoor storage on, you know, one side for the bigger equipment, for the landscape, the farm that's here.
It goes from Mitchell to Butter.
Mitchell to Butter, yeah. If you can see, there's a very, there's a flag strip that goes on to Butter, and then there's also a dog leg that goes on to Mitchell. Their address is Mitchell, but they do operate from Butter. If you see here, I can zoom in a little bit. This is, the barn's going to be in this area here. I do have a staff report prepared.
And the little, sort of, little cabin that's there?
I think everything's mostly gone. This is mostly just trailers that's here now. You know, formerly, I know they did get a violation for some stuff that, you know, wasn't permitted, that was too close to property lines, that's all been rectified. But if you see on the site plan, it's a very small barn, considering the size of the parcel. Here's the barn itself, and then this is about a little over 400 square feet for the lean-to where some bigger equipment's going to be. And then I do have floor plans and elevations, so you guys get an idea what it looks like. Very simple. It's brown color, I think a black roof. And then this will also legalize, legalize a very small shed that goes over their irrigation equipment that's on the site plan as well, which.
And this is primarily a landscaping inventory?
Well, yeah, it's, exactly, but it is considered a farm, considering what they grow. Meets the definition, but this is the small shed that's going to be legalized. But if you're ready, I can go through the staff report.
Sure.
Get through some referrals, and I know the applicant's representatives here, I'm not sure if they'll have any questions at the end. As I stated, this is 1,200 square foot enclosed floor area for the storage barn with the 480 square foot lean-to area, the legalization of the 54 square foot pump house shed. It's about an 11-acre ag reserve created by the map of Mitchell Lane Farm, which was filed back in 1979, in the CR-80 zoning district, APOD, the ag overlay, New York City Archaeological Sensitive Area, which runs on Mitchell Lane and Butter Lane. It's a type 2 action under secret, because this is, you know, for agriculture. Public comments, there was a public meeting via Zoom. I know we did have some neighbors come out, and I did summarize their comments. They were, you know, concerned related to noise from the property, the hours of operation, the nature of the use, and whether this was retail or not.
Yes.
It's a wholesale operation. The applicant did provide a letter from their attorney that kind of outlines everything that's going on there, and it's, it fits squarely within the definition of farming. In terms of referral, the engineer did have some comments. He's looking for a test hole, the material, the proposed driveway, and asphalt paving details and spot elevations, and an engineering review fee. They did recommend engineering approval. Ag Advisory Committee, we got that on July 6th. They found that the scale of the proposed building is appropriate for the size of the agricultural operation on site, and that the location was also appropriate. Conservation Board did note about the barn, and that this is somewhat in the drainage, what's it say? I think it's on number four. Their headwaters of Long Pond, Little Long Pond, and Calis Pond, which are part of the greater Me Cox Bay drainage system, so they did ask for drainage on site to collect the water, so it's not running off down eventually into Me Cox, which they do show on the plan. Fire prevention, they did, their, one issue with this was that there could be confusion only because this, the address for this property is Mitchell Lane, but you do access it from Butter. It might be a good idea for the applicant to potentially change the address for emergency services purposes, that it's a Butter Lane address, so.
Come in on Butter?
Come on Butter.
Okay, so that's.
The Fire District said they had no comments. ARB approved this back on May 18th. CAC, we did not receive any comments. In terms of site plan standards, setbacks meets all requirements of CR-80. The use of the barn, they did outline what's going to be stored in the barn itself, two tractors, utility cart, you know, very customary stuff for the operation here.
Do we, do we need to put anything specific to exclude anything that we might not want?
I have it in the, as conditions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If you see, these are the typical conditions after that, so they have the mower attachment in the, in the lean-to area, but for all these, for all at Construction, we include these standard conditions to ensure that's a bona fide agricultural use, which is the topsoil that is not removed, and then no landscaping and horticultural services, so that would be like a special trade contractor, a landscaping business, which would be prevented from operating there.
Matt?
Go ahead.
You, I'm seeing the, the resolution, but I'm not seeing the reporting that we usually have with the resolution, so what you're reading.
Staff reports there?
I'm not, it's not, I'm not seeing it.
Page 159?
Yeah.
Page 162. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Should be there.
It's there. Because I got into another, another application, sorry.
That's okay.
There was something in between.
I figured it wasn't there.
So you're going over the general conditions?
Yeah, these are, these are things that we associate mostly with at Construction, just to, to assure that it's bona fide. No living quarters, without planning board approval. All utilities serving on the site shall be underground. This is gonna be unelectrified, no water, no sewage. This is a shell to store equipment. No outdoor storage within 50 feet, and any lighting, which they don't propose now, would be subject to your approval.
So the one condition that is to be discussed with the applicant is changing the address to Butter Lane?
I think that's, if you wanted to condition it, you could. I would offer that they probably speak to the, maybe speak to the fire marshal to see if that's appropriate for them. I have a condition that they would have to comply with all their requirements, if the fire marshal doesn't think that's necessary.
Does the fire marshal have that in writing here?
They did say that it could offer confusion. They didn't require that they change their address. I thought that just might be a solution.
Uh huh, okay. So is the applicant here, wants to address that, please?
Michael Shiano from InterScience Research Associates on behalf of the applicant. I haven't spoken with the owner specifically about this condition. I do know that access is available by way of Mitchell, Mitchell's Lane. There is more space potentially for a fire truck to access from there. Probably if we added or made sure that there was proper address markers on that side, it would probably be sufficient. There is a fence there, but the gate is not locked. So a fire truck, because for larger trees, they can get out from Mitchell's Lane. But I could speak with them, with Rennie Shear, to confirm whether or not he would be okay with changing the address.
That would be helpful. Also to post the address, so that you can see it.
Mm-hmm.
I tried to do a site visit and couldn't find you for a while.
Mm-hmm.
So I think some signage or an address...
Right, the, the numbers that are required under the code.
What number you are should really be posted.
Right, yeah.
Can I just question again, go back to what's being stored?
Yep.
Anything chemicals?
They're not, they didn't list anything that there would be any chemicals stored there?
Is, is that something that we should limit? Because you said it's near, there's issues of drainage and the pond?
Con Board had concerns about essentially runoff, just from the building, that it would...
So they don't want flooding, like, many of these do? But what are you storing in there? I mean, do you have any chemicals? So that's our question.
I do not know, the information that I have about what they're storing in there was provided in the application.
In the application, which is pretty much farming equipment to maintain the use here. They didn't list any chemicals.
No fertilizers, no?
If they were going to store any type of chemicals, we would have to get some type of approval from the Suffolk County Office of Pollution Control.
And I believe the D.C. as well, yeah.
Anything with fertilizer?
Yeah.
Right, so if there was...
Gasoline or anything.
I think we discussed it at the hearing, I recall.
I think something is coming to my mind, and that's why I'm asking. Because I know the community was concerned about that, too.
Yeah, yeah, I only have the information that was provided. They're not listing any chemicals, fertilizers, or anything, so...
So what do they say, farm equipment?
Yeah, farm equipment. Yeah, that's what I, when I read through. They have two tractors, a utility cart, Skid steer, a tree spade, so that's what digs into the ground, lifts the trees up, a wheel loader, hand tools, burlap twine, baskets, and then in that lean-to area, mowers attachment, a mower attachment, a rototiller, a disc harrow, which churns up the soil, and a subsoiler. I don't know if we wanna preclude it, because I don't, I don't know that we can.
Or that we'll come back to?
They could come back to the board if they wanna store additional material.
Yeah, yeah, if anything you'd additional.
You'd have to come back to the board.
Right.
That's fine.
Is that specifically put in there? That they would have to come back to the board if there's additional storage or different?
Yes, anything not listed.
Anything not listed, they'd have to come back. I think that's reasonable.
That's it, good.
If we can put that in specifically, that would be good.
Absolutely, I'll add it as a condition.
General, general condition?
Yeah.
Excellent, thank you. The only thing that I, I question is B, on the general condition, no landscaping and horticultural services?
Yeah, that's a, that is a special, like a special trade contractor. So a contractor who would mow your lawn, do tree work, stuff like that. So we wanna preclude that, because they couldn't operate off of an ag reserve legally. This is a farm, this is not that.
Okay, it's just a very vague sentence.
Yeah, I know. But for, for our, for our purposes, that's, that's a standard condition that we use, and the building department will see that, and they will know what that is.
No landscaping and horticult, retail services? No, you're not talking retail ser...
No, not retail, no.
You're talking the business of horticulture and landscaping, yet they're selling trees for landscaping.
Yeah, it's a, but this, for the selling, the growth and sale of these trees is wholesale and is considered farming. It's not, it's not a landscaper, it's not a nursery. It's, it's different.
Technically, the retail sale of trees from this property would not be a permitted use.
Correct.
So it's already under, under the zoning code, it's prohibited. So we wouldn't be able to do it regardless. So even if it was under the, this decision, it wouldn't be something that we could do anyway.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good, all right, so...
I can go through the conditions if you want on the...
Yeah, go ahead.
On the approval. So changes to the plan, to revise the title, the construction permit of Paul Shear III, revise the survey to indicate the current zoning is CR-80, and that there was zoning relief for CR-40 by the subdivision, provide the test hole, material, the proposed driveway, asphalt paving detail, spot elevations, detail for the proposed drainage structures. The general conditions, no topsoil shall be removed, no landscaping and horticultural services, no signage shall be installed on-site other than a sign indicating the street numbers. The living quarters shall be installed on-site unless approved by the planning board. All utilities serving the site shall be installed underground. No outdoor storage within 50 feet of all property lines. Lighting is subject to planning board approval. Here's where I'll add that any additional items to be stored is subject to planning board review and approval.
Thank you. I also have something.
Sure, what do you got, Jac?
C. No signage shall be installed on-site other than a sign indicating street numbers on Butter Lane and Mitchell Lane.
Sure. All right, and then I have a pre-construction meeting with the engineering. Compliance with the requirements, Southampton Office of Fire Prevention. Then prior to signature, the engineering fee, notarized affidavit, and six sets of plans submitted for signature.
Great, thank you, okay?
Yeah, sure.
Good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Motion?
Motion.
By Zagorelli, second by Gloria, and all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, one absent.
And then I just have an acknowledgement, which I just gave the plan for Gloria.
That is...
Is that what that is?
That's what that is.
They are hardware, we're acknowledging...
If you recall, they're doing the basement.
Yes, acknowledging that signature.
Yeah, I see it, okay.
Cool.
I, I will sign it, Jackie.
Great.
We're gonna hold you to that.
Okay, Jackie Finlan is up next, and that goes to number 1, page 9. JCS Resources?
Yes. Yeah, so this is item number 1, page 9 in your packet. This is a proposed three-lot subdivision of the lot 9 on the Sophia Place subdivision. I did want to let the planning board be aware that this is in the CR-200 zoning district, but this is actually established as a RAD, which is a residential receiving area, which was part of the Central Pine Barrens plan. So this is an area that can receive additional density. The town board also voted to create this as a RAD. Sophia Place, the original subdivision, had additional density, and then there are specific covenants that allowed lot 9 to be further subdivided into three lots.
Okay, that's new information, certainly for Craig and for Gloria, a RAD.
Yeah, so, and I made a nice finding about it in the fourth whereas, so that you understand the provisions of the town code, if you'd like to look that up, so that you understand that.
Are there any other RADs around, or just this one?
Yes, there are. Actually, see the yellow? So these are all RADs. So this is a RAD, this is a RAD, this whole thing was a RAD, and then right next door. So actually, I have received, this property just happens to be for sale, so I have received calls for people looking at establishing a subdivision here, possibly receiving additional density as well. But this is all in the CR-200 zoning district.
In West Hampton?
In West Hampton, yes.
And where, where, where are they getting the land from to the density?
They're getting it from West Hampton. I have the Pine Barrens development rights in the file. So they're just a bunch of small properties, basically from the core, in West Hampton School District.
Okay.
Yep, so this is like a zoom-in of the property. One of the things that we've been working on is just really making sure that the map, this was deemed incomplete in December of 2020, but we're gonna be seeing a common driveway plan here. And as you can see, this property was previously mined, so we also have a revegetation plan that we're considering.
How about an environmental review?
We already did SECRE on this, and we made findings that it was historically cleared, but that it would be revegetated. And as discussed at our staff meeting, we're gonna do the fill requirement, which would be a covenant, that an engineer certify the fill that is being brought in, which is a standard requirement when it's stand mine operation. But this was basically, material was just moved off-site. There was no dumping or any hazardous waste. So we did conduct SECRE already on this, and then deemed it incomplete. And then this is the revegetation plan, to just show you. Oh, sorry, it's sideways. But you'll see that we're reveging, this is, let me see if I can... This is the revege plan, but as you'll see, we're going to...
Does the Pine Barrens, Commissioner have to sign off on this revege?
We're actually responsible for imposing the Central Pine Barrens, but I'm gonna do a referral. So part of this is deeming this complete. We will send referrals to the Central Pine Barrens for their comments. And then I am recommending this be deemed complete and schedule a hearing for August 26th. But this is a revege, so you can see in the red, they're gonna regrade and provide this revegetation consistent with the development pattern of the three lots.
And do you revege with pine, pine trees? The typical trees that are...
Yeah, we have, this is, yeah, this is a draft plan, so we're gonna send this to the Conservation Board, Central Pine Barrens, I'll review it as well. You know, at face value, it's fine, but I have already recommended some changes. But we'll work on that together with Pine Barrens and the Conservation Board as well.
But the Pine Barrens, is the Pine Barrens Commission at full boat now? Because I know they just got a new, a new director.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. But we'll refer to them, and I can, you know, I can contact their staff directly and let them know it's coming. But, yep, otherwise, if you don't have any questions, I deem complete and schedule for August 26th.
Motion? Motion by Gloria to deem complete in August 26th, second by Robin. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, five in favor, one absent. Okay, Jackie, number 2. Hyma Whitson?
Oh, sorry, Mike is the representative for the application. He just had one question.
For?
For JSC, the one we just voted on.
Yep.
Again, Mike Shiano from InterScience. The, the applicant was just wondering, at what point in time in the process would the filling and grading be something that they could do? So that, that's after the, if you can just clarify what that procedure would be?
Generally, it's prior to building permit, and then it's an engineer, private engineer certifying the fill, that it's clean and stabilized. But then it's also usually witnessed by our town engineering division.
Okay. So they have the pre-construction meeting when they look at the site, and then the fill is looked at by both the town engineer and the private engineer?
Correct.
But that all has to, that cannot happen until after the, this is actually approved by this board?
Correct.
Correct?
I mean, unless you wanted special, you know, authority to do it sooner. But generally, it's, the minimum is that it's prior to building permit.
Okay.
May I be permitted to comment, I think?
Mm-hmm, you just have to use the podium.
You have to use the podium, please.
Absolutely. Excuse me. Thank, thank you for allowing me to participate.
Your name and your affiliation?
My name is Steve Katz. I am the principal of JSC. We have fill available now, and I only ask that in the interest of avoiding any further erosion and stopping any groundwater, because that's part of our plan, from leaching from our property to the property adjacent to us, if we could be allowed to put the fill in sooner, we could mitigate those problems.
How does that get handled?
So now that I'm aware of that, I would basically consult with the assistant town engineer, and that way, but you would have to, in the meantime, you would have to have an engineer certify the fill material, give us a grading plan, so that we can bring all the grade up to... I mean, I have no problem with it, but we would have to review that, and then we would take it to the planning board once the engineer is basically okay with the plan. We would bring it back to the planning board for authorization.
Thank you, I'd be delighted to do that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so Jackie, what's happening here now? You just, you wanted to set a...
Yeah, so we set the hearing for August 26th, and we already had a motion on that.
Okay.
So we're moving forward to Curtis Hymowitz and Newsbone?
Right.
Which is number 2 on the agenda, page 20 in your packet.
Page 20 in the packet?
Mm-hmm.
Item number 2 on the agenda. Yeah, this is great.
This is very comfortable.
Good.
This is working. Yeah, as long as you...
Yeah, and I, we're just getting adjusted to making sure.
But it's good. The only thing is the audio in the room is low, so we'll have to ask Charles to...
I'll try to move that closer. So this is an application, we had deemed it incomplete previously on June, let's see, on November 12, 2021, we deemed this incomplete. What is happening here is if you see this parcel here, this is a zoomed-out aerial, just to give you an idea of the kind of peninsula that they're located on, and they're close to the water. This property in the middle is actually being split between the three property owners on Cedar Lane West, and this is a zoomed-in, so, but there are wetlands here. So we had deemed it incomplete. The applicant has now provided where the wetlands are located, which you can see they're here, so they're kind of like to the south here. And this is the proposed configuration of, as the result of the lot line modification. So essentially, this is going to the neighbor here, the top of the lot is going to this neighbor here, and then the wetlands is going to this neighbor here. So based upon the review, we do now have a complete application. That was important to have the wetlands noted. So I am recommending that this be deemed complete. There are a few minor items that they asked, I asked the applicant for before the hearing, so I am recommending a hearing date of September 9th on this, so they can get us that.
Can I just say, so moved the wetlands into, did that cause any problems in terms of any of the structures he currently has?
Well, we're gonna have to evaluate it, because these always were there. We'll refer this again to the Environment Division for Conservation Board. But yeah, we might have to establish some buffers. I mean, we can't really force them to relocate the structures that are there now, though we can bring the property more into compliance with buffers and possible revegetation. Which is why it was important to know where the wetlands were. So we can move forward, yeah.
But it looks like that they don't meet setbacks, and so then what do you do?
Well, I mean, this is a separate property, so, you know, we're gonna do the best with what we've got, essentially. So, but I'll take, we'll take the conservation board's comments into consideration. And most likely, we'll try to re-establish as much of a buffer as possible. And I'll talk to the applicant's representative, you know, about the wetlands issue.
Because you can, they can do the measurements right now, it looks like.
Yeah, yeah, and that's one of the things that they wanted a little more time to.
Can you make it a little larger?
A little larger, sure. Yep.
Is that a tennis court or a house?
This is a tennis court, putting green, sand trap. And chipping area.
So the tennis court is how many feet away from the wetlands?
I could measure it for you if I had a scale, but I'd say.
But just roughly?
Probably roughly like fifty feet? Fifty feet? I'd say roughly fifty feet.
Right, so that's.
Yep. Yeah, and a buffer. Well, with a buffer would be normally seventy-five with an improved property. Yep. But that's why I asked for the wetlands, so we can evaluate that.
So they may have to turn it around horizontally.
Yeah, it'll be incorporated into our pre-application report.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So a public hearing for September 9th.
Correct.
Motion to deem complete by Robin, second by Craig, all in favor. Close extensions, six in favor, one absent. Then you are Lawrence Chantel Broda, number three, and that's twenty-three in the packet.
Correct. So I just want to show you that this is actually two separate properties. One is the flag strip right here, and then this is the subject property that's being subdivided. It does already have an easement, which I have copies of as I required. This was also deemed incomplete previously, and I asked for information on the flag strip deed, as well as the scenic and conservation easement that runs along the west. We also asked the applicant, so this is like a zoomed in aerial. But you can see there is town open space to the north and then town open space directly to the west with the scenic conservation easement. So the planning board had requested a cluster plan. So this is the standard plan with two conforming sized lots.
Can you give us just some location? This is Little Neuyak Bath.
Yeah.
So you go up Cook's Lane and hang a left?
Mm-hmm, yeah, this is Little Neuyak Bath.
Give us some context, if you would.
Yeah, so this is kind of, it's actually right south of the high tension lines where they pass here. I could give you, you know, it does, it is like.
Where's the Winawski farm field?
It's up in the woods, basically. Where's what?
Winawski farm fields, the farms?
I believe they're to the south.
The south?
Yeah. Yeah, this is up in like the woods, basically, right as you, I'm sorry, I don't have a better zoomed out aerial. But yeah, I was even looking for it myself when I was on site visits. And I did find the address, but there's nothing here. So I was just, I found the addresses to these two homes and kind of drove up the driveway.
And it's CR-80?
Yes. CR-80.
With all these log flag lots, it's really hard to figure out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where anything is.
Yeah, if you'd like.
You don't see it from the road.
If you'd like, Jackie, I can do like a more zoomed out aerial for you, so you can get an idea.
It would be nice to get the context of it, so if we want to do a site visit, we know where we're going.
Sure. Yep, and that's why I usually do one zoomed out and one a little more zoomed in.
Just take, let me take a look at those flags.
Yeah, I can bring it out a little bit further and I can email that to you.
There are many flags there.
Yeah, so those are serving these two lots here, which are not subject to the application, and then these two down, and these three down here.
Well, that seems to be an awful lot of these developments off of a road. I mean, they, they have many ways to get in from a road to build in undeveloped.
Yeah, so they're proposing this as their access strip right here.
And there's no other access, right? No other logical access? Is there fire protection up here?
I'll look into that. I don't have it on here, but I don't believe there's public water, but I'll double check that.
Right.
Is this the paved part of Little Neuyak? Is it, when it sort of comes out to the fields before Cook Lane, it kind of goes into sand, dirt?
Yeah, it's like Cook's Lane, and then you go up, and then this splits off Little.
To the right, right?
Yeah, to the left, actually.
To the left?
Yeah.
Yeah, and if you go to the right, you really have no road, but.
Yes.
If you've got a four-wheel drive, you do it.
Yeah, so right now, though, we have everything we need to deem it complete. I spoke to the applicant's representative, and this will also be a hearing for September 9th. So I recommend it be deemed complete with the hearing.
September 9th, okay. Okay, motion?
Motion.
By Gloria, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. Close extensions, five in favor, one absent. Are you, are you done, Jackie?
No, next is agenda number nine, which is on page forty-eight in your packet.
Oh, yeah. Number nine, forty-eight.
So this one's easy to find. This is just north of the railroad tracks, on the right side, on the east side of the road. So this is a triangular property. It was actually created by the subdivision of Raymond G. Wefsnowski. The property owner is proposing to redevelop it, so there's an existing house and pool now. I did a site visit, and based upon the site visit, I asked them to change the configuration. So there's existing clearing there already with the redevelopment plan. They're gonna be revegetating in the green. And what I wanted to show you was, that's, this is the actual survey. This is the re-veg plan, just so you can know. So these are all the specifications for the revegetation on the top there. But I did want to show you that the original plan actually had the tennis court here in this location. I asked them to relocate and reexamine the redevelopment plan, because this northeastern corner is actually still remaining in pristine woodlands. So what we did is we were able to accomplish relocating the tennis court down to the south and take advantage of existing clearing pattern. And with the redevelopment of the property, they, they are proposing, sorry, it's fifty-four, I'm sorry, fifty-one point eight percent of clearing. But they, as a result of this, they will comply with thirty-five percent. And I just wanted to let you know that this was the subdivision when I did, I'm sorry, I didn't actually save the historic photos. But when I did the historic photos, this all used to be to the south, this was all ag land. So when I was there, I witnessed that it was more invasive species that had revegetated over time, you know, opportunistic. It wasn't actually pure woodlands. So the applicant was receptive, and they were able to redo the plan. And so this is the plan that we have now, which basically, this was all agricultural. So it was nice that we were able to reexamine this, move the tennis court where it was more like huckleberry, brambles, you know, it was just kind of overgrown field. And then we were able to retain the majority of the mature woodlands in the north.
You might want to recommend that to that last application that we looked at, where the tennis court is fifty feet from the wetlands. They have space to relocate a tennis court.
Yeah, I'll speak to the applicant's representative on the wetlands issue on that previous one. But I have a resolution prepared. The applicant's representative is here if you have any questions. But I think, you know, it was a good result that we were able to relocate the tennis court and utilize the existing clearing.
Great. Anything, Danny, do you want to say anything?
Yeah, I have an idea, thank you.
Great. Okay, so we are approving this site disturbance?
Correct, yep.
Motion by Robin, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. Close extensions, five in favor, one absent.
Next on the agenda is Alexander Breland. Jackie, we did speak about this at the staff meeting and previous to today's meeting. So I had an idea, but it hasn't been vetted by the Trails Advisory Board, and the applicant is currently discussing it with the applicant. But my idea was that there's actually an extensive. Oh, sorry, yeah, number twenty-four, page one seventy-two. So this is gonna be an extension of the action deadline, but my idea was that there's this long driveway from Daylily Lane that nobody wants to actually improve.
It also says dead end, by the way, you know, at the.
At the end of.
At the beginning of Daylily Lane, before you go in, it says dead end.
Okay. So when this subdivision, the previous subdivision, which was Charles Vandavere, this was four oversized lots serviced only by Daylily Lane. There was no access to Mill Path. So it was covenanted that they utilize and improve this long common driveway. But now we have Mill Path, so it makes much more planning sense to have two individual driveways from Mill Path. And if you can see, I will, I can actually email you. I did the aerial for the applicant, so you can visualize it better. But this will come up in the pre-application report. But there's an extensive trail system to the north, which I'm sure Gloria is familiar with. So my idea was maybe we can utilize this flag for a trail to get down to Daylily Lane. And hopefully sometime in the future, get south of Scuttle Hole Road, because Daylily Lane goes to Scuttle.
Goes all the way.
Yep. So that's gonna be evaluated by the Trails Advisory Board, the applicant's bringing back that to their client, because they don't want to improve a driveway that they don't really need. So I think it might be a win-win.
Right, it's not being used, great.
Yep, so we're evaluating that, but this would be an extension deadline until August 12th, the next.
August 12th, okay, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by Robin, all in favor. Close extensions, five in favor and one absent. The next one is item number twenty-five, one seventy-four in the packet.
Yes, this is. Yeah, so item number twenty-five, page one seventy-five?
One seventy-four.
Oh, sorry, one seventy-four? So the applicant's representative is here. The planning board had asked them to consider a breakaway gate. And the applicant's representative is here. Actually, I do have a nice letter that, for you.
Yes, this is where the people were parking on their land, right?
Thank you.
Just some nice pictures, though, so you can get a view of the land. But as you can see, this is the aerial, and, you know, it's hard to show on an aerial, but this area is actually very open. Quite beautiful, beautiful scenic vistas all the way around. But what we're dealing with here as vegetation is really, you're just dealing with beach grass and marshland. So when, you know, it might be a little out of character to, as suggested, to have a breakaway gate, because literally, it would just kind of be a gate hanging in nowhere. There's no fences, it's all open. So I asked the applicant to put together that package for you, explaining that they would like to proceed with the grass pavers. They have agreed to maintain and have snow removal, so that there will be no issue with emergency vehicles utilizing this in the future, which was my concern. So I recommended that that be a covenant, that they agree to maintain and mow and remove the snow in the winter, so that it's available for emergency vehicles.
So what shows as gravel on here will be grass pavers?
This, this area here is going to be grass pavers, and there's.
Yep.
Yeah, let me see, there's like a detail.
I still don't see how that's gonna keep people from parking there.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So I, I.
They do have a sign, if I believe, picture in the packet.
I used it to turn around and.
Okay.
Well, it's up to them, right?
Yeah, Joe, if you.
Joe, you want to speak to this, please?
Hi, everyone. Joe Lombardi from the Reiner Group for the applicant. It seemed like there were two concerns that Tom, or the assistant town engineer, had. And that had to do with maintaining the grass, that it should be mowed. So that the turnaround does not become basically invisible. The applicants are more than happy to mow at whatever interval the town wants. The other concern had to do with snow removal, and they already take care of snow removal now, because just in case they want to come out. The three homeowners that want to come out during the winter, the driveway's plowed. So those were the, those were his two concerns. He did say that the pavers will support emergency vehicles, which is what we're looking for. So the breakaway gate is just not going to work in this instance, not a.
We're just curious how, will the pavers, just caring about your client, are the pavers gonna stop people from parking? I don't think so.
The idea is if it looks more like.
Private.
Private, more, if it's vegetated, it's not really part of the driveway. At least in the view, as, you know, as someone who is not familiar with the driveway. Now, the curbing will remain in place. To provide support for. And along the curve in the front of this turnaround, there'll be new curbing put in. There'll be mountable curbing. So the fact that you have the curbing going around the curve, hopefully that will keep people from driving up over the curb to park on vegetation.
So you'll see. I mean, there's no way to predict human behavior, not in today's world.
No, not at all.
And so if, you'll come back to us if it's impossible.
Do we need to refer this to highway if it hasn't already been?
No, I don't think so.
This was reviewed by engineering and already reviewed and has a wetland permit, administrative wetland permit from Marty Shea. So I made a finding in the resolution. He's already approved it. I worked really closely with Marty and the engineering division to get this kind of as a nice sneak package. We asked him to evaluate the breakaway gate. He's back. It's not really, you know, it doesn't really work in this situation. But this is really impacting the private common driveway, so we did not send it to highway in this case. It won't be impacting the town road.
It's private property, it's not, it's not town road.
But it is for, the whole intent is for emergency vehicles, so when they're responding, they can, you know, get in and out of there and back up. And, you know, if somebody needs to be taken to the hospital in an ambulance, there's an area, rather than having to do like a five-point turn, they can get out of there in case of an emergency.
I hope it works.
Yeah.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much.
Take care.
So I have a resolution. The only thing I'm gonna add is the proposed resolution I had as a covenant, as a condition, a covenant shall be filed guarantees weekly mowing. And I'm just gonna say a snow removal. I'm just gonna add snow removal in there. And then we asked for a sign to be posted, that the Y turnaround is for emergency vehicles only, but that was before you showed me the picture of the sign.
Did you say weekly mowing is gonna be in the covenant, it's gonna say weekly mowing in the covenant?
We want to make sure it doesn't get too high, so that it's not available. I mean, the timing.
They probably have their law on mowed weekly anyway, so we'll just.
Is that okay? Okay, so I'm just adding snow removal to that. And I would just need a motion, if you're ready to approve.
Motion to approve by.
Motion.
By Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Vote. I hear a vote, all in favor. Extensions, five in favor, one absent.
I'll go along with it, but I don't think it's gonna solve the problem to try to fix, but that's, you're certainly welcome to try it.
Okay, the next one is number twenty-six, M4 Lumber Holdings, number one seventy-eight in the packet.
Correct. So we're dealing here with a swale. And, you know, this.
Just enlarge it for us, please.
Sure, this application has been around for a while. It always showed a drainage easement along the east. You can kind of see where the vegetation is darker right here. And then we actually imposed this slope and conservation easement here for the Wolantis and Engelbrecht subdivision, which kind of meets in with the natural swale. And during the recent modified plan, we realized that there's actually a significant amount of water coming from the west, too. It actually makes like a V. So this is gonna result in an extension of the action deadline. I actually just met with the applicant's representative. They hired an engineer to evaluate the amount of water, cubic volume, speed. So we just received their preliminary analysis of that. So it's most likely going to result in some form of swale, but we're evaluating that now. So to give us time to evaluate that, we are, I requested an extension, and they consented to an extension of the action deadline until August 26th. They are hoping to come back with more information for you on August 12th. Hopefully, we have enough time to get that and review that before that meeting. If not, this will come back on August 26th for you, too.
Great, I'm glad that's happening, because swales are important.
Yes.
So.
So this would just.
An extension to August 26th.
Yep.
And four, motion?
Motion.
Motion by Craig, second by Zuccarelli, all in favor. Close extensions, five in favor and one absent. I think you're done, Jackie?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That was really great with the tennis court, Jackie. That was really.
Keep moving those courts.
Jackie likes homewoods. Yeah, but that, that was a really good one.
Okay, so Claire, you're up. So number eight, Stavropoulos is your first one?
It is, and I guess I should maybe announce that the, a couple other ones I have on. Number twelve, Atlantic Golf Club, that will be just a distribution of the staff reports. There'll be no action today. That action is, action deadline is August 12th. So won't be discussion. N-13, Seig Harbor Antique, that's a distribution of the staff report as well, and their deadline is August 12th. Just wanted to clean that up.
And staff reports are on the computer.
The staff reports are in the packet, yep. If you're missing anything, any questions, just email me. That'd be great.
Okay, so number eight, Stavropoulos.
So.
Which is not forty-two in the packet.
Yes. So in this case, the planning board. There we go. The planning board, this is a subdivision of the property. This is the aerial. This is the one with Bobby Vans and a retail shop next door. And they went and split it down the middle. I'll show you the plan in this case.
It was not the Candy Kitchen, it's the two to the east.
It's, it is the Candy Kitchen, Candy Kitchen, and I think the.
There's a little retail shop and then Bobby Vans.
Yeah, and then Bobby Vans, correct, yeah. Yeah, so this is the subdivision.
Candy Kitchen separate from the retail and.
Candy Kitchen's on the corner, and then.
There's a little retail.
Retail, and I think then Bobby Vans, if I'm mistaken.
But this must be the little retail.
Joe might be known better than I do. He's more familiar with it.
It's the corner.
Joe Lombardi from the Reiner Group for the applicant. This is actually Bobby Vans and the atrium.
Oh.
So. I'm sorry, it's a Candy Kitchen and the atrium. Bobby Vans is on a separate parcel.
Oh, okay.
Okay, and this is to settle an estate. After Bridgette Stavropoulos died, the estate separated the Candy Kitchen building from the atrium building, and they went to different parts of the family. So the purpose of the subdivision is to settle the estate, to get them on separate lots, and, you know, be done.
Isn't there a common wall, though, Joe, between Candy Kitchen and the atrium?
Yeah, there is, but it's not unusual, I think, you know, in village business, to have a lot line that runs.
Through the wall?
Along the wall, like, you know, there's a zero setback, I believe.
So this has undergone substantial review by the planning board, and the most recent action was in 2018. We amended the, and updated the reports. The two years has passed, and so usually, we'd require a pre-application to start again. But in this case, maybe because there's no residential nearby, essentially, they're just drawing the lot lines in this case, not creating any new density. The applicant has asked for a waiver of the policy in this case, and so they can proceed with the final application, which they have ready at this time, right? With the Health Department approval?
The only change, though, Joe, is they did massive septic tanks in the back behind Candy Kitchen.
Yes.
This year, or last year.
No, that's correct, and it's appropriate that with item eight on the agenda, because it took eight years to get Health Department approval. It was, you know, we applied for the Health Department approval right after we got pre-application approval, and that was November of 2013. We didn't get approval for the subdivision until May of this year.
Okay, so the septic goes with Candy Kitchen?
Both systems for Candy Kitchen and for the atrium building had to be upgraded. So we had to do that. And as a result, when we filed the subdivision application, they made us file a commercial application to upgrade the two systems. We had to go to the Board of Review, and we actually had to go to the Board of Review twice, because they made a mistake in their determination. And.
Well, how do you divide that, then? I mean, do you have to divide that septic field in the back?
No, there are two separate sanitary systems. No, there are two separate sanitary systems. The candy kitchen.
You see it up there? It's, I can zoom in a tiny bit more. You can see them, they're present on the property. So this is their own. For lot number two, it has their own, and lot number one has their own also.
Each has a self-contained septic.
Septic.
Right.
That was a massive undertaking.
It was, and that was one of the reasons why it took so long, and while we were going through the reconstruction, COVID hit, and it was just one thing after another. So that's one of the reasons why it took as long as it did to.
Is that a standard septic?
It is a standard septic.
There's an apartment over the candy kitchen?
Yes, there is.
And then, and the atrium doesn't have any living quarters, does it?
No.
Just retail?
It's retail and non-medical offices.
So it's not a wet use?
Excuse me?
It's not a wet use?
Not in the atrium.
Okay.
And what is the shading along the road there?
That's an easement.
The. The driveway that went from School Street to the town parking lot actually encroached on the property. So we granted the town an easement for that, and then the town granted us a utility easement so that we could put our utilities underground to go to the site, because if you remember, there was a, there was an electric pole out there, so we put everything underground.
So lot one will stay burdened, and will you still have the burden on lot two also? It seems to be a piece of it.
Yeah, there's a slight piece on lot two, just that triangular sliver.
So both pieces will be burdened the same.
We did that in 2018. Town board approved it.
And actually, the board at the time had recognized it in the pre-application report, which is attached if you want to take a look.
So all of that language is in this pre-app report?
It is.
Well, here it is, yeah.
Yeah, it is.
All the updates, the septic, the division of the septic.
So they've just submitted their, if you consider today to waive the policy, I'll take a look at the final application and make sure that it's substantially.
The same.
Same with the pre-application.
With the updates, yeah.
Yep.
Good.
Okay, I think it's fair in this case. It's appropriate. It's up to you, the board.
You want us to reauthorize it now?
Correct. That would be great.
Without you reviewing the.
Oh, this will be just to reauthorize the pre-application report, and I would be, I would be looking at the final application at the next available meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
That sounds fair.
Great.
So we're approving the pre-app as it was?
Yes, for a period of one year from today, so, okay.
You're sure you'd want 10 years?
I hope not. I plan to be retired before then.
Yeah, exactly.
But you persevere, Joe. It's great. Can I have a motion, please? Motion by Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed abstentions, five in favor, one absent.
Claire, what is the date for the year?
So it would, the date is going to be July, today's the 22nd, 2022.
Okay, thank you.
So the next one.
Next one is, well, you've taken number 12, you're just distributing.
Correct.
Okay, so that's distributed. And number 13, you've distributed.
Correct.
So do they have action deadlines, both of them, August 12th, or what?
They do, and both of them, the, well, let's talk about Atlantic. Atlantic, obviously, I think you'll have some discussion. There's some issues in the pre-submit, in the application, in the staff report. So the applicant is aware of that. They just need additional time to formulate a response to you. And then, so they'll, I imagine the 12th will be a discussion and extension. That's what I'm encouraging in that case. The other one, Sag Harbor, you had asked at the work session for additional referrals, one from the Egg Advisory Committee, which are, they're meeting August 3rd, so we'll have that plenty of time for the 12th, and the chief building inspector is considering whether there has to be a public component to a museum, so he's definitely giving it some thought, and will consider that for the 12th, but that probably will be a decision based upon their comments, of course.
Claire, going back to the Atlantic Golf Course, in the deck it says review. Now you're saying it's just.
Yeah, this, I was informed last night about two, you know, less, sort of evening, about four o'clock, that it'll be off the agenda, and we set the agenda on Fridays, of course, so.
Distribution stuff.
Distribution, okay.
Okay, so number 14 is the GTV Real Estate Group?
Yeah, so you had a pre-submission report that was issued on this application. This is for a restaurant, standard restaurant and miniature golf on the property. So this is the site plan. I'll just zoom out.
What is it? Nothing here.
Yeah, there was nothing in the packet.
Draft in progress.
Oh, yeah, there was nothing, not even plans, huh?
Do you have something?
I did not.
I haven't noted there was nothing in the packet, so unless it, unless it got here miraculously.
No, it's not in your packet. I'm sorry about that.
Do you have?
This is the plan. This is the plan for this. This is a coordination of SECR for the project. They have submitted a full site plan application. And because it's a type one action, there's more than 50 parking spaces, it needs to be coordinated for SECR, so that would be.
Would you take out the bar component since it's not permissible?
Right. It's only a standard restaurant with an accessory bar. It's not, no nightclub associated with it.
This was Benicasa's application, and now it's being handled by Kyle?
They, I think, yes, yes. Kyle Collins is the applicant's representative in this case.
Because we saw this.
Yes. It's substantially in accordance with your pre-submission reports.
Duke, can we have a copy of the pre-submission report because it's been a while?
Sure, of course. I'll definitely email it to you.
What are we on for today?
Coordination of SECR.
And that's going to start what clocks, please?
To start the clock with the SECR application, yeah.
Or scoping?
No, not, no, just what you would do is establish lead agency. Lead, okay, and then that's.
So you're asking interested agencies involved, which is, do you want to be lead agency?
Oh, okay.
So, no, no clock is starting.
With regard to SECR, there is, but not with your application, no.
What's the time?
It has to, when you receive an application, at the earliest convenience, you put it on for coordination with any involved agencies. In this case, it would be the DOT, I think, in this case, and the health departments. Those would be the two other agencies that would have, be involved in the application.
What about West Hampton?
I don't believe it's close, within 500 feet of the Village at West Hampton Beach.
Okay, we just need to refresh our.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You know, it's a big application.
Sure.
Right, so then, once that's coordinated, what clock, what's the next?
Then there's 30 days to get a response from those agencies, which typically those two agencies don't come back and say, I want lead agency, so you would assume lead agency at that time. And that would be August 26th, let's say, and then, then you have then 20 days to do a secret determination for the project.
So this is just commencing coordination, so can you also, but please send us whatever you've got on it?
Well, the pre-submission and the plans. These plans I will send you.
Claire, to send pre-submission.
Yep.
And plans. Okay, so we need a vote to commence SECR?
Yes.
By Robin, is that commenced?
Or just?
Coordination. Coordination. Second by Gloria.
Yeah, I'm just.
All in favor.
Well, it's the first action you're taking, so.
Yeah, yeah, I've just.
Commence. And did we ever have a work session on this?
Yes.
We did.
We had a, I think it started with pre-submission. I don't think there was a work session prior to that.
I remember Paul coming with some plans. But I don't. Is this different than what was presented by Paul?
No, it's very similar, very similar. Maybe the design of the building was different. It seems to be a little bit less modern and a little bit more cottagey in terms of design.
But we have time if we want a work session.
Oh, absolutely. And if you, if you think you have more questions now, I can give them the heads up. They'd like a work session prior to secret determination. That's fine with me.
Yeah. It's a question of when?
Yeah, I know.
September.
Exactly. I know. That's so true.
Okay, did we vote on this?
Yes.
All right.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Breach Petroleum, number 15.
That's the next one, yeah.
One 11.
Patty, was there actually a vote? Because I know I've made the motion. Gloria in second.
Did I take a vote?
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, I'm glad you're.
I didn't remember taking a vote.
Okay, so number five, Breach Petroleum.
15.
15.
Yep.
15, and number 111 in the packet.
Yep, number one, number 111.
We don't have any, do we have anything here? Nothing got in.
Nothing here either.
Oh, I think there's a resolved, and there's a aerial, and there's a plan.
Oh, no, this is there.
Not used to seeing one paragraph.
No.
I know. So in this case, the ZBA.
This is another coordination or?
Yeah, this is a coordination. This is to assume lead agency. So in this case.
So just explain for just a minute, because we just did something about coordination. Different from this?
It is. So what happened is the ZBA was the one who received the application, and the last one, we received the application, so we are the first interested agency to do the coordination, which is what we did in the last section. This time, the ZBA received the application, so they coordinated approximately a month, a little bit more than a month ago. And you had indicated that you wanted lead agency in this case. The ZBA, at their last meeting, which was last week, relinquished lead agency to you because no one else was interested.
So now we assume lead agency, so that's our action.
That's your action. There's no, there's no action related to SECR today. You could start it, obviously, to talk about the issues. In this case, the pre-submission report really outlined really well, I mean, it didn't attach it to your packet, outlined some issues that you had with this project. If you remember.
Can you enlarge it for us?
Sure. This is just the aerial. Do you want to see the aerial or the site plan better?
Now, give us the aerial first.
Right.
Gloria, you all right?
Yeah. It's not very convincing.
So, oop, that's the wrong property. This is, I'm on Talk Highway. This is an existing gas station, three pumps, with what was a repair garage on the property.
We've seen this many times.
Many times, yeah.
We've redone the site plan, we've imposed planting, setbacks, crosswalk, the walkway in the front.
They had to get a lot of variances from the ZBA.
And we've got a lot of community.
Yeah, the people on Walker Avenue.
Lot of interest in it, yeah. So this, the action today would be assume lead agency, and at your next meeting, you would consider SECR. We have done that before on this project, and for a larger facility on the project. They have reduced it. But there may be similar issues from the last time you saw this during the SECR review, so.
We take lead agency today, and then the next time on is to make its determination of its past decade or decade.
Correct.
And then start the rest of the SECR.
So the pre-application report would always be helpful in these instances, just to bring us, refresh us and bring us up to date about the issues we already discussed. So you'll send us a pre-app report?
A pre-submission?
Pre-submission.
Yep. Yeah, in this case.
Does everybody agree?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, so motion to assume lead agency.
Motion.
By Robin, second by Gloria, and all in favor. Opposed abstentions, five in favor, one absent.
That's great. Thank you. My next one is Watermill Village Townhouses.
115. Computer.
Oh, man, did I forget it? Sorry, I'm just looking to see if I have anything. I thought I attached a plan. Oh, I did. It's just not in the right order.
Okay, so it's been clear cut?
Yes, the activity has started on the property, yep. So a condition of your approval was that there be a soil management plan adopted by this board and then implemented by the applicant. That is a little bit more technical than planning staff is used to, and so the town engineer, your condition of approval said that it should be subject to your approval and town engineer approval, but with on consultation with an expert. At the time, you had got advice from FPM, which is a company that did an estimate at that time for your review, and has provided another estimate for the review of the soil management plan in this case. So this is the plan for, associated with the soil management plan, so I just want to show it to you. It actually shows you the remediation area that's being considered. But this action today would be to hire FPM to be your consultant in the review of the soil management plan, to make sure all the protocols are being followed.
If we do, they should really revise their letter because they have an asbestos inspection, which is not what this is about. This is arsenic.
Initially, it was actually asbestos inspection. However, all the buildings are now demolished, so that would be inappropriate. There's no.
Yeah, so they have to change their letter.
Yeah, exactly. Okay.
So they are just doing, they are just they are just looking at the company that is doing the soil remediation to make sure they're following protocol?
Exactly.
They're not doing anything more than that?
Correct. So they'll come back with a report to you agreeing with the management plan or agreeing with some modifications in this case, and we'll have the applicant here, too.
So what is their communication is with the engineers and the soil remediation company for the site?
No, they'll go, they'll deal directly with the information they have in front of you and report to you regarding it.
Okay, because when I, I mean, as I told you, I read the contract, and nothing in the contract said anything about what they were going to do. So I just wanted to make sure that $1,000 that we're paying is worth it because they want to charge $500 to come see us, which is a bit absorbent.
Well, I guess we're special.
But the scope of work, the scope of work is the, we are agreeing, like, they have attached their boilerplate language, but the scope of work, I thought, did detail what they were proposing to do for the board. It's a letter agreement.
Yeah, no, I read the letter. I read the letter.
You weren't happy with that?
Well, I just think it's very vague. They evaluate the scope of work.
They'll review the SMP, which is the soil management plan, so, you know, it's the lingo that they're using, but.
So they're going to review a soil management plan that's being done by.
That will be implemented by.
The company of the developer.
Right, exactly.
Okay, and then they will, we will not contact this firm without town approval. We will not provide information to entities other than the town during this evaluation. And they're going to prepare a report?
Madam Chair, do these have to go out for bid?
No, it's professional services.
I don't think so, because this is.
It's professional services. We don't go to bid for professional services.
Is this including now, let's say they look at the management report, and I, I'm sorry, I should have read this more thoroughly. They look at the management report and they say, we need you to change A, B, and C. Company says, no, we can do D, E, and F. How much more are we getting charged for them to say whether D, E, and F is fine, or do they do a revision, or is, are they on the clock for every time we sent back?
Right, because they've attached a per hour. We don't know who is doing this work, whether it's going to be an engineer or whether it's going to be a technical administrative assistant. They've, they've attached their per hour rates, but we don't know who's doing what.
Well, Stephanie Davis is the one reviewing.
And she is an engineer?
She is what's called a PG. Oh, hold on a second.
She just signed that. She's a project manager.
Yes, I see, I see what you're saying.
So can you just ask some questions about this, Claire? Because I just. Because I just.
Who's paying for this? Who's actually paying the bill on this?
The applicant.
The applicant.
Oh, the applicant is actually paying.
Be charged back for professionals.
I just want to be respectful, whether we're paying or they're paying. I just don't know how many times the clock keeps getting hit on this, because things do have a back and forth. So is the back and forth at another hourly rate? Is it, is an engineer going back and forth?
It's not clear. It's not clear who's doing it. That's why.
Well, the company is doing it. FPM, whoever the company is going to be doing it.
Probably sending a lower-level person in to do it, because for a thousand dollars. I mean, I'm just assuming, because it's not stated, that we will send an engineer to review it, et cetera, et cetera. That's why I discussed this with you. I said I rarely will read the contract. When I read this contract, I thought, well, there's nothing in it that's specific enough to explain what they're doing. So if you could discuss something with them, that would be helpful.
Who's going to be doing the review?
Who's doing it? And, and.
If it's an engineer, you comfortable with that, right?
I would think, that's their.
Okay.
And then the question is, if there's revisions that have to be made.
Then what?
Are we back on the clock, is the applicant on the clock? I want to be respectful to the applicant and not feel that I can't ask a question, because I don't know what kind of clock amount I'm running the applicant up. That's not respectful to them.
I think those two questions are valid.
Okay.
I'm going to have the engineer just be, do you want me to have that condition of this hiring her? Because I, I do also respectful for the applicant is awaiting the review of their soil management plan, so I'm comfortable with that.
Well, tell the applicant, we're actually concerned about his money. Okay, that his money is being spent in a way that is going to accomplish the task with us, and give us the flexibility to ask questions without running up an unknown bill to him. So we're not, we're, I think we're being considerate of, would you say, Madam Chair? We're being considerate of his expenditures.
Exactly right.
I just don't want to.
The point I brought up, yeah.
Well, I just want to point out that the fifteen hundred dollars was actually something even discussed back in 2019, when you acquired that. I'm just pointing that out, so that's a very consistent number. It's not like it went up.
I just don't know what the given, the back and forth is, because I've seen these consultants, I've seen what happens with consulting bills, where we start with one estimate, and I ask a question, the next thing I know, I've just cost the town X amount of dollars that I didn't realize.
Right.
So I want to be respectful to an applicant we're working with. And, and I don't know if his attorney looked at this or what, but.
They were agreeable to the, they were immediately agreeable. They gave me the check the next day.
Yeah.
So I just want to be able to, because I know they're under a own timeframe. I think there's a valid questions, and I can definitely find some of them.
I understand your position, but I don't think it's in our realm. I think by doing that, we're taking on the responsibility of telling them what they can spend. I think they have people, their attorneys and their PEs be able to tell them.
I hope so.
I think, I don't think we should discuss making decisions on what they're going to spend.
I'm not making, I just don't want to be limited not to be allowed to ask a question.
Look, 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 Claire. Our action here is to hire a consultant, so the questions are within the context of that. So we're going to hire this firm, okay?
Yep.
You can convey to her, or him, whoever it is. Those concerns, you know, if they, if there's going to be more, what they think.
Yep.
More review, and that it is for arsenic. I mean, it is for arsenic, yeah.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah.
No, that was a good catch on that one, so we'll clarify.
I think usually, when you get a request, or when you get an application like this, they usually add something to, and what the additional cost might.
Contingency.
Contingency would be.
I don't see a contingency.
Yeah, so, and maybe it's such a simple thing from their perspective, and that's, we don't, that's why we're hiring them, that it's a no-brainer, that that's not necessary, but we don't know that.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Okay, so we have a motion to hire this consultant.
Motion.
Motion by Gloria, and second by.
Second.
Robin, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed extensions, five in favor, one absent. Number seventeen, Loaves and Fishes, one twenty-four in the packet.
So today, we're going to review the staff report on this application. This is an application you've seen a couple times before. This is the one immediately to the west of the existing Loaves and Fishes store and restaurants. This is for an additional café, and apartments on the second floor, and a single-family residence in the rear. So I'll show you that site plan.
Where is the cross-access link, Claire? When you show us the.
What they're doing is they're sharing the same driveway coming from Montauk, so there'll be no additional curb cuts there. And you can see the additional parking spaces to the left there.
Right.
On the west side. And then this is the connection. This parking lot that's existing will be connected to the parking lot for the proposed property.
Is there a mapped-out road there, or just open?
This will be an easement between the two properties.
People will know enough that if they're behind the restaurant, that they can.
Well, there'll be no access back here.
There'll be no.
No access back to Montauk Highway. That will be narrowed to be one lane only.
So everything from the restaurant, the existing restaurant, and the new proposal is going to exit onto Butter Lane?
Correct.
That's a load of traffic on Butter Lane.
It is.
And it's a residential street. And so I think we have to be mindful of that.
And the curb cut now is, would be on the west side of the current inn.
Right, Montauk Highway.
Where it is now.
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't drive that part of that road, so I wasn't sure.
Wait, now it's a two-way access, because obviously, that's the only way they can get in and out, because they don't have that connection now.
Right.
Did we discuss anything about left-hand turns, right-hand turns out of that driveway onto Butter, or not?
Not yet, no.
Okay.
Didn't consider that? That would be something you can consider during the review.
Because there's a signal on that corner.
There is, and that's the advantage, obviously.
Right, but it's, but it's a substantial amount of traffic, particularly when they are serving dinner. To get people in and out of there onto Butter. Not quite sure what we can do about it, but at least we can flag it.
And I want, understand, and the applicant's representatives here, too, but that the facility for the, this is going to be more of a café, like a breakfast-lunch situation, and then this would be, remain the restaurants, you know.
So they'll be quicker in and out.
That's my understanding. The number of seats in this café is forty, so that's been, that's been actually reduced. It was, it was originally sixty when you saw it at the pre-submission process, but it's been reduced to forty seats in this café, so.
And the number of parking spaces, is that, that we?
Forms, yeah.
The new, based on, so it's all the parking back there for the café?
Yes.
And there'll be a walkway from the parking to the café?
Yes. There's walkways throughout, if you can see this, yeah.
Claire, if they change their business model to having it be breakfast, lunch, and dinner, can they just do that without any kind of coming back to us? Or?
They could, unless you, unless you had some kind of confidence or something like that. I think they could, yeah.
So the number of seats?
The number of seats is fine, yes.
Yeah, the number of seats you can't, but if you choose to change your business model in terms of what you're going to serve and when.
Right, exactly. These, obviously, these will remain two entities, so they can separate it.
So the parking, the shared parking then is for the original, the restaurant that exists, for the café that's being developed, and for the house at the end of the property, which will have four apartments?
No, this house is a regular house. I think there's five bedrooms in it. I don't.
And where's the affordable housing?
Upstairs.
The number of bedrooms. Let's see. I can't read that.
Well, neither can we.
I need glasses.
Well, I can't.
Six bedrooms.
On the, on the ground floor, and then?
This has four apartments that are affordable, four affordable apartments, which is very in keeping with the zoning on the property, which in this case is HO.
So these are apartments above the café, I mean?
Above the café, yes.
And the parking is indicated, the parking that's there is for the apartments?
No, the parking here, I would imagine, might be for the restaurants, and then the apartments will have, and that's something they usually do, that you'd usually designate where the apartment parking might be, so that they're not locked out from the restaurants, or whatever the other use is on the property. Sometimes it's offices. So you may want to designate where you'd want to see those apartment parking spaces.
And are these still going to be for some sort of senior housing?
Yes, that is actually a requirement, but not for you, from your perspective, from the health department's perspective. They're the ones restricting it to seniors in this case.
And will there be an elevator for these seniors?
That's a great question.
Yes, because they're all on the second floor.
Yeah.
Oh, Jeff, just.
Eric.
Identify yourself for the rep.
The answer to the elevator is yes.
Just identify yourself, Jeff, please.
I'm sorry, Eric Bregman.
Eric, sorry.
For the, for the applicant.
Okay, so. Can you just pull out a little bit, Claire, so we can have a sense of the entire?
Nope, that's not pulling up.
So the front building has this café with forty internal seats, nothing exterior, and nothing outside?
That's correct.
It has four, how many apartments up above?
Four.
Four apartments for senior, restricted to senior, affordable?
Yes, they're restricted by you to affordable, they're restricted by, we've agreed that they'll be senior.
Affordable and seniors?
Yes, both.
Okay, then there's an internal courtyard?
Yes, between the two buildings.
And then the building in the rear is just a private residence?
Yes.
With?
Six bedrooms.
With six bedrooms? Okay. So this is AI? Are we putting an AI system in here?
It has to be.
Yes.
It's county code now.
Well, that's been the offer from the beginning.
Yes, but since July one, it's, we, I thanked you beforehand.
Okay. Thank you for that, thank you.
Do you want to go through the staff report?
Sure.
Any other questions?
We will as we go along, I'm sure.
Yeah, so this is a site plan, special exception for the restaurant and the four affordable apartments and the single-family residence, cross-access to the east, a 1.2-acre parcel. The improvements are shown on the plans that are provided. The ZBA granted some relief for front yard setbacks and side yard setbacks, and a rear transition yard of fifteen feet, or thirty feet is required. SECRE was an unlisted action. The planning board adopted a negative declaration on December tenth, 2020. Public comments. Planning board held a public hearing on June tenth. Comments were not received during the hearing. Comments received during the thirty-day written comment period were follows. Request that planning board require a covenant for the following matters. Landscaping on the northern and eastern border, boundary line to be maintained in good living condition. Install and maintain a secure gate and the fence between two-two-five-two Montauk Highway and forty-one Butter Lane, which is the property to the north, just so you know.
Is that where the property, house is in the rear?
No.
Yeah, you can, those are, yes.
This property here.
And what about that other house?
This house?
No, the other house, one, one to the west of there, they, they have not appeared, and they actually requested anything.
And then outdoor lighting shall not be installed beyond the property line. Just as a comment, I received these comments and talked to Eric Bregman and the person who presented this. The landscaping and the outdoor lighting are two site plan issues that you would definitely listen to and require as part of the site plan. To have a gate between two pieces of property was something that didn't seem to be a site plan issue, so I encourage the, this person to maybe withdraw that, make it a private matter between the two, and I think that's what they're going to do going forward.
Yeah, I don't see where a gate would fit in unless.
The, the person to the north is a good friend of the owner of the Bridgehampton Inn restaurant next door.
So they just want a gate somewhere.
She wants a gate so she can walk across. And that's what, and so they're arranging it between, I mean, that's what it's all about.
Well, that should be between.
Yes, exactly. Sounds good.
And she's the only one with the key.
And, exactly.
I just have a parking, a parking question. So if I come in the main driveway, which there'll only be one, and I go right.
No, you can go.
You can come in here.
I'm sorry, Butter Lane is two ways, so you can enter from Butter Lane.
If you can.
Well.
So my question is, the parking that's in the rear of the restaurant, the existing restaurant?
Yes.
If I come in, oh, say, say I come in from Butter Lane, I can park there, can I?
Yes, you can.
All of that's available?
Yes.
And anybody who's coming into the café, because those four little spaces are certainly not going to handle the traffic, can also park in there?
Yes.
Right, there's no separation?
But also all in the back, so that's.
So all the parking is available to, all, all the, available to all the, the different uses?
All the uses on the properties, the two properties.
Okay.
And how many spaces are there in total?
There are thirty-three, and there are thirty-two required.
No, but all, overall, because this is shared parking?
Correct, yeah, well, I'll, I'll have a final count for you, but thirty-three for the, for the new use, we'll have thirty-three parking spaces.
Okay, but we are looking at shared, so we're looking at a cumulative number.
I'll, I'll put those notes in there. I'll have that for you next time.
Please.
I remember doing that for the inn, and it's something like twenty-something, but I'm not sure of the exact.
Okay, Claire, sorry.
No, no, that's a good question.
And do we need to draft a shared parking agreement here, or?
There's, so there'll be an easement between the two properties, correct?
I've already submitted preliminary.
Okay.
Both the, the northern boundary landscaping protection that's in the application, and also a draft of cross-access. They may have to be refined with Kathleen, but.
Okay.
So, so these two properties are remaining separately owned?
Yes.
Despite they have the same owner, but.
The same beneficial owner, yes.
Got it.
But they're not merging?
No.
Okay.
And, and they don't merge, actually, as a matter of law, given in the, the size and the location and the function.
Right, the two conforming pieces of property.
So referrals, if you're good. I didn't receive any comments back from the Bridgehampton CAC in the application.
We had a public hearing on this, right?
Yeah.
And that they didn't.
Nobody showed up.
Positive or negative? I didn't receive anything from CAC in this case. So in the health department, again, no response. Housing, no response to date, but I've been in touch with the housing department. They're going to have some comments because of the affordable components. There'll be restrictions related to that. The fire marshal, I just received their comments on that, and so I'll have them for next time, just pretty pro-formal comments on that one. Bridgehampton Fire District, no response to date. The town engineer, this is where, why we're not acting on this today, the deadline is for August twelfth, is the town engineer had numerous comments, you'll see those on page, the next two pages. I know the applicant's representative is working on those comments and addressing them, so we can get an approval from the health, highway department, oh, I'm sorry, engineer prior to the next meeting.
Our engineer and surveyor, like all of them, is just backed up, so.
So they can address those comments.
He knows what the deadline is, so hopefully, we'll meet it.
And then the highway department said they had no objection to the application. So here, as we go into the special exception use, they're related to the apartments on the property. Do you want me to go through them? They're pretty standard, it's up to you. Okay, so the first one is, they comply with the master plan. Of course, even the comp plan update, that recommended apartments in these types of zones, so this is in accordance with that. Plot area sufficient, it meets that. The apartments are single-family residents. C meets the requirement, the proposed use will not prevent the orderly, reasonable use of the adjacent properties. D, the use.
Well, how did you respond to that? Property is located in HO.
Property is located in HO.
I mean, I only have one issue here, the amount of traffic dumping in Butter Lane.
The reason, the cross-access, cross-access arose when the application for the Bridgehampton Inn and the cook store, the cookware store, was done. And then this board wanted there to be cross-access, actually, to go over to the property to the east as well. And we agreed at that time and filed a covenant, saying that in the future, if there were a development, we will. a development, we, we, the inn, would cooperate with whoever was developing this property. And now we're doing that because that's what you asked us to do.
Yeah, but that's not my question.
Okay.
At all. My question is that we did not know the development, what the development would be on this corner. It is now, it's going to be a beautiful development, but it's an intensive one, and all of that traffic will be coming out on Butter Lane. You can't go back out onto the highway, you've got to go to Butter Lane, and you'll either go north or south. So my question is, this standard, the proposed use will not prevent the orderly and reasonable use of adjacent properties, well, all the properties on Butter Lane are residential, pretty much, other than the school depot, bus depot, which is right across the street. So I just would want to say something to that effect about the traffic exiting onto Butter Lane, a residential street.
Okay, what would you like to say?
In just so many words, that's what I just said.
Mm-hmm, that there's going to be commercial traffic coming onto Butter Lane?
Onto a residential street, right.
Okay.
There's no exiting onto Montauk, correct?
No, nothing. It's all on Butter. So it's thirty-two cars, that's why I asked you for the number, plus whatever the restaurant is, it's probably another thirty-two, so it'll be sixty-two cars.
Well, yes, that's capacity. I mean, there has never been a traffic issue at the moment, but they're not going on the Butter Lane, that's absolutely true.
Yeah.
They're going onto the highway. The problem has been that some people want to make a left-hand turn coming out of the inn, which is difficult even in February.
No, I understand that, but I just want to flag the fact that it is a more intense use in the location that it is.
Okay, I definitely, definitely make that statement there.
Yeah, I mean, the only mitigation I could see is if we allowed right turns only back onto Montauk.
That's what I'm, just ask Jackie.
Okay, so that...
Is there a reason?
You mean left tantrums?
No. Right, right, because right...
What do you mean?
Right turns out of Montauk Highway.
So one-way?
But, no.
Designed as one-way?
I know, but we're saying if it's not designed as one-way, if you're designing it selflessly...
I'm just asking, if you, if you're concerned about everything dumping out onto Butter Lane, okay, if somebody wants to make a right turn onto Montauk, can, are we not allowing a curb cut for exit there, perhaps not easing up?
Well, that's, that's the way it's designed right now.
Yeah, well, I'm asking, is there a reason we're not looking at a right turn?
Well, I just want to back up to one second. This plan's been the plan that we've seen to date through the preseason report.
Claire, we know, Claire, we know.
No, 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 I just wanted to make a statement. Can I make a statement?
Yeah, but we know that.
Thank you. No, 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 you do know that you looked at this for SECR. You issued a negative declaration on this plan with this one-way access with the parking.
And I...
Actually, that's a fact, I just want to remind you of that.
Well, that also stifles us.
No, it doesn't. You, you, as a board, did the right, the thing at that time, you looked, you took a very close look at this issue.
Okay, I'm asking, can I ask the question? Would it assist the traffic flow within the development, and would it assist the traffic flow that the chair is concerned about going out to Butter, to take another peek and see whether, and I don't know if it's, because I know we don't want curb cuts on Montauk, I know we've, you've been very negative about having more traffic go out that way, but I'm just asking the question. Is there any benefit to...
May I suggest something?
Yeah.
I think we've done an exact instance on different situations like County 309 and in Montauk, where you say no right turn onto Butter Lane. Everyone has to go down to Montauk.
They have to go to the light.
From the light. Everybody has to go to the light, where you go right or left, you go to the light.
So that keeps it away from the houses?
That's true.
I've seen that.
Yeah.
I think that's a very good tool.
That's a very, that's a...
It may be ignored, can't be always, but it's, it's encouraging people to take the safe route.
Well, because they did do that at the train station.
Correct.
You can only make a right-hand turn.
Yeah.
To get out of the train station, then you go to Butter Lane, so, I mean, we're dumping a lot of traffic onto Butter, and as planners, we just need to look at that again. That's my point.
That's my suggestion, but the applicant, this is new to the applicant, so...
Okay, can we look at both?
We have a curb cut on Montauk.
Right.
Right now, it's indicated to be one-way. What we're saying is, as a possible alleviation, maybe we make it two ways, but when you come out, only a right turn onto Montauk Highway, that's all.
And then the...
So that there's a better internal flow for the traffic, and a, and a less alleviation on Butter.
I'm sorry to bring it up so late, but it's, I'm just trying to...
I think the applicant will do what you guys prefer, but I, that's different than what Claire was talking about.
No, I think there's, yeah, I think we ought to look, okay, let me, let me back it up. The chair has brought up a very good point, that we are now concerned, in a review of this, in an early, in an early enough time to make changes, we're looking at this and saying, we have a concern right now that perhaps we are dumping a lot of traffic onto Butter Lane, and perhaps we're causing problems with the residential area and such. Can we look at two other alternatives while we're in the early stages of this project? One of possibly exiting onto Montauk for right only, to improve the internal flow, and possibly Claire's idea of no right from Butter Lane, so that we go out to Butter, onto Butter, right, onto Butter Lane, so we prevent the going there. If the applicant could take a look at that, and those two, and come back to us with their feelings about it, and...
That would be helpful.
That would be helpful, yeah.
Because when, when the train station traffic was directed only right turns, no left turns, it was done because there was a signal on Butter Lane, but it put a lot of traffic onto Butter Lane already. So if we could prohibit only left turns out onto Butter, at least you only have that short section of Butter Lane that you're impacting, you're very close to the light.
Sure, I, I will ask, I don't think there's any objection to it.
All right, no objection.
But, I don't, as Claire says, I don't, sometimes it's not a hundred percent followed,
but it's followed some.
And then if we can look at the right, out of Montauk, I wish we had traffic.
The other thing about it is, even with the, the inn, which has a lot of similar customers at, at different times, right, there has not been any traffic issues at the light for the people who are going, want to go north on Butter Lane and out of the inn and up Butter Lane. I mean, the traffic's been flowing fairly well, and the parking's been working fairly well, so far, but that's without...
But that's just the inn.
Yeah.
You know, you've got a big house and four apartments and a cafe.
I understand.
I'd appreciate if it was given another look at this early stage.
So the question is, is it okay with the applicant to have a left turn?
Yeah, just review it with the applicant, what we're, our concern.
The, the two options.
The two options.
And, because maybe he's already spoken to his, the traffic engineer who's going to say, oh, they crazy, you can't do that because X, Y, and Z. He'd come back to us and say, that, that was a great idea, except we've already looked at that, and we've counted, discounted that because of X, Y, and Z, but we don't know that.
But we don't, we don't want this application to be a nuisance to the community, and so, I mean, we know the owners of the property, and she's certainly cooperative.
Yeah, she's, she, she was maybe living in that house some of the time, so she's, you know, this is, you know, her, her, her area.
So just discuss it with her, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Claire, you're going down the special exception?
Yes, is, so, D, site is particularly suitable for the location of such a use in town. The site is zoned HO, under 330B6, conformed to the limitations of sixty percent of impervious surfaces. The applicant has pointed out, and one of the plans show that it conforms, so I'll just add that language, I think it's about five, fifty-five percent, so I will add that.
And Claire, going, going back to C, you may want to just wordsmith something about just the parking, the, the exits and entrances in general, that there's a, we'd like to look at.
Yeah, because you're saying...
The two suggestions.
Yep, yep.
Or in a more general way, that way.
Okay.
It just, it raises the, the issue a little bit.
Yep, and I'll highlight it for the next time, so we know that's one of our issues that we need to discuss.
That's always helpful when you make changes, so we don't, we don't have to read everything.
Exactly, you don't have to read it all again.
Yep.
Okay, no problem. This subject, property is not located close proximity to any place of public assembly?
Isn't it right across the street from a church?
Yes, and it meets the...
Oh, yes.
The state liquor authority, the guidelines, it's actually even somewhere on that survey.
It would be over there.
There's, there's a line that shows, there's a, the two-hundred-foot line from the door of the church to the, to the project, so it meets...
I thought we should note something.
You'll put that on, Claire?
I will, yes, that is located proximity to church, but it's not inappropriate, it meets any, any setbacks.
Well, it's within a distance, within the...
Yes.
What is it?
There is a, there's...
Five hundred?
The SLA requires it's two-hundred feet.
Two-hundred feet, so...
From door to door.
Yeah.
Okay. Proposed use comply, conforms with the chapter definition, the special exception use. So it's a proposed apartment, and it complies with the definition of apartment and dwellings as defined in the town code. Access, this is what we'll talk about access also, right, that you want to double-check the access for the property.
Well, do we just want to put the apartment in there, or we also want to talk about...
The special exception is only for the apartments.
Only for the apartments.
The site plan standards would be for all components of the use on the property. So again, it'll say exits and access to the property will be looked at, right?
Yeah.
H, the curb cuts, any approvals required for DOT if necessary? Did you want to say something about this, Eric?
It's not clear whether you'd need DOT approval for the change to the existing access.
You're not changing anything on Montauk Highway. The only thing is, if we put, if, if we go with some of our suggestions to alleviate traffic on Butter Lane, they might have something to say about no, you know, only right-hand turns, but...
There is some engineer...
They're never helpful to us.
Exactly, there's some engineer in DOT who says, you got to reapply for Montauk, and we said, no, you don't, so they're in discussion.
I mean, if you can make a left-hand turn on Montauk Highway at any time, you're suicidal.
Okay, so that's H, and then J has to do with the park, or I, excuse me, has to do with the parking calculations I'm making, the, the changes to that. It is a forty-person restaurant, so the number comes down to thirty-two required, thirty-three spaces provided, and I'll add language related to the existing use on the eastern property and the required number of parking spaces.
So you do bring the cafe into this now, even though with special exception?
Well, because it's a total number of parking spaces for all the uses. Yep.
Are we still land banking far?
No, at this point, they conform with the thirty-two, they provide thirty-three.
So that'll come out?
That'll come out, yeah. There was a correction on the, it was originally, as I said, sixty seats, and they came down to forty seats, so they now conform to the code.
So that we change that, right?
Yeah.
So the subsection will be changed.
Yeah. J is the buffers. So the ZVA granted a setback of the building in the front to twenty-seven feet here in this location, which doesn't meet the requirement for a freestanding sign. So, did you know that? Do you need, are you going to go back for a variance, any signage?
That is a possibility, but there's no current plan to do it.
No plan to do it? Okay.
Okay.
Gotcha, just wanted to give you a heads-up on that.
It's not going to happen next week.
Yeah.
It happens, I mean, I, there's no current plan to do that.
So the other issue with the buffers, so they got a reduced buffer of fifteen feet where thirty feet is required to the residential zone, so you just want to maybe look at the landscape plan, which I do have, now or later, landscaping on the property.
That is in the application plan, the full-size drawings are there.
This is the elevations, which are very nice, we've seen them before, and this is the landscape plan.
Yeah, there's a lot of buffering there to the north, to the residence.
Yes, so this is the, the north. Do you want me to turn it? Is that easier?
No.
So this is the, the north there, so it's attractively landscaped in this area.
And street trees, right?
Oh, yeah, we should add some street trees here, one, two, three.
There are street trees on Butter, but I just don't know what condition they're in.
They're actually, well...
Are they okay?
In my view, they look good, but...
They're good.
I'll, I'll take a look at them in the meantime.
Okay.
But maybe a couple in front of Montauk Highway?
Be nice.
Yeah.
One may be there.
Where's the sidewalks?
The sidewalk goes all the way to the corner.
Martyrs, Charlie Martyr actually made this design.
Oh. Okay, so for those comments, K has to do with the sanitary system, the applicant proposes the new IA system in this case, so they're proposing that for the uses on the property. No outdoor display on the property, and M have to do with the specific standards for apartments and the use. A has to do with where they're allowed, and of course, it's HO, so conforms. B, apartments are located in the second floor of the restaurant, which conforms with that standard.
Is there any, is there any need to put, elevator accessible?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's a benefit, I don't know, I don't know if it's necessary here.
But it, it documents all the information, which is going to add.
And when we, when we talk about IA systems, this, I think the statement should always say per Suffolk County Health Department current code or something, because otherwise it sounds like we're, we're, we're getting something that isn't necessary, but well, but welcomed.
Good point.
I can definitely add that. So under B, I'll add something about the elevators?
Yeah.
Yeah.
There was an elevator proposed to be installed.
The apartments shall have no more than one or two bedrooms, in this case, some of, I think two of them have one bedroom and two of them have two bedrooms, so they conform to that code, that's my memory. D, the apartments shall comply with the minimum floor area, which is four hundred square feet, and they are larger than that, so they meet that requirement. Here, it says one apartment for each use, of course, it's only the one use, the restaurant, but in this case, the planning board for a situation of affordable housing can increase the number of apartments, and it's appropriate in this situation, and the four apartments will be moderate income and comply with the director of housing requirements, which we're still awaiting. Initial and continued eligibility prior to...
Excuse me, Claire, do we also want to say, and focused on seniors?
I, I mean, if, it's up to you, I didn't think it was appropriate to restrict them, because if the health department requirements change in the future, you know, they modify their application to the health department and they don't have to be senior, I didn't want to be so restrictive to that. That would be a health department, you know, matter, you know, so in the future, you're not restricting it just to seniors, the, the affordable component is the most important for us, I think.
But I, isn't my understanding that you cannot restrict affordable units to anything? I mean, whoever wants to rent them can rent them?
It has to conform to fair housing.
Fair housing code.
Yeah, but there, there is a, that's really an interesting, Philip, there's a special provision in the housing law that says you can restrict to fifty-five and over, which is the senior.
Yeah.
So there's, it's a special deal.
Would that be a town restriction, or?
It's a health department, it's a health department restriction, which is why Claire is recommending that we don't.
Yeah, it doesn't seem like
Reiterate that. It'll be a CNR with the health department, but if there comes a time that that ever changes, then the town's not restricted. It's always going to be in an affordability component.
I'm just leaving them the flexibility, just because I think the affordable part is the important thing. We can mention that it's going to be senior pursuant to health department regulations, current regulations or something like that.
Something like that, some sense.
If you're
And moderate income is the same as affordable?
Yes.
Interchangeable terms?
Yes.
You know, remember we have a lot of communities, like we've done PDDs that are 55 and over. So we do have
But they're not affordable.
Some of them are.
Sure.
There's a need.
So I think I was at F, right? To ensure that it's, that it's affordable going forward, that we require, have a covenant to that effect and that we require, we would comply with the director of housing requirements. Parking requirements are met, so I'm just going to change that language. There's no waiver required in this case.
No, but we, do we want to say something about shared parking, total number of spaces is?
I'll add the language from the other section. H, the apartments shall meet the definition of a dwelling unit. So that will have to meet that's requirements. I, all the proposed use will be compatible with the business use within the building. Any change of the business use shall be treated as a special exception use and require the planning board, approval by the planning board. I usually have this as a condition of approval, just in case they wanted to change the use to something that might be not so compatible with a use of the apartment uses upstairs. In this case, HO is pretty restrictive on the uses. I don't, I don't see a problem, but if you were in a different zone, HC zone, it may be inappropriate to have maybe, you know, liquor store below or, you know, something, you'd want to look at it. You would want to double check, right?
I mean, it's wonderful to have people living above the shop, but in this instance where it's restaurant and food, it could be, you know, the nuisance of smells, the nuisance of smoke, of exhaust, all of that.
Right, right, exactly. So that's just something in the future. So I have that as a condition of approval usually. And then J, all the requirements of the New York State Building Code shall be met. And K, the apartments shall be year-round use, not eligible for seasonal rental permits. So that should be a condition of approval too. Site plan issues, here's your traffic access, so I'll put some language that you said under that. And we'll have that highlighted for next time. Interior circulation, parking, your two comments, your comments related to that, I'll add. And then landscaping, we talked about already. Add this language there. D is the existing development, the master plan, proposed actions consistent with the relevant goals and objectives. I am actually, let's point out the cross-access is also part of that. Natural features, the natural features, again, they're pretty much developing the whole property. I might mention the street trees.
Street trees.
To remain, cultural features, it's an NA. Pavement, obviously the town engineer comments shall be addressed. Lighting, I have reviewed the lighting, everything's in conformance. Did you want to see the lighting fixtures? They submitted them.
Yeah.
This is actually the lighting plan. You can see the lights here, the lights here at the entrances, around the building and around the building. So they're the minimal, minimal lights in this case.
Basically the same lights that exist on the in property.
Those are the, yeah, the town.
Yeah, so it's very consistent, should be good. And then the facades, the ARB has indicated their approval. And then the drainage, obviously again, has to be addressed, the town engineer, public utilities, the IA system. And I'll mention that it's required by the health department. Public address system, there shall not be any. And physical challenge access, the handicapped spaces shall be maintained on the property. And energy conservation, I don't know of any energy conservation, special, any special provisions for energy conservation in this case. And then the cross-access, which you've discussed before, the architecture, C facades. And it's not located in agricultural overlay districts. So those are the issues, I guess. We'll wait the applicant for the next meeting. And that's the action deadline too. So I'll have a decision written up that they can, they can talk. And maybe if you have an answer, Eric, on the access prior to, I can send it to the board ahead of time. So you're not, you know, you don't have to wait for that issue.
Sure.
Eric, one quick question. If someone's walking on foot and they want to go into the café, is there any pedestrian way to get in or do you have to go on the driveway?
No, there, if you
There is.
Oh, there is one there? Oh, yes.
There's three.
There's three.
That's great.
Okay. And what, there'll be bricked paths of some kind?
I'm not sure that, I don't know. I don't know if they'll be pavers or bricks.
Okay.
Oh, look, it looks like pavers. Looks like limestone almost.
Yeah.
You want me to have that as a question?
Yeah. They'll probably match it to what they have for the in.
Yes, I think that's the plan. The idea is to make it
Look like
harmonious complex.
Right, that they act together. Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
So the next item is Honqawg Matter. This was on a month ago. I had it originally on the agenda to amend the covenants for this case. This is a condo on Foster Avenue in Hampton Bay. This was Allen's Acres and it was converted into a condominium, 24-unit condominium with two of the units designated as rental units. And the board had a lot of questions. We hadn't seen that before, we hadn't seen it in a while because the decision was from the late 2000s. They are now getting ready to complete the project and so they want to tie up their covenants and any requirements from the original approval. You had a lot of questions about the rental units, who's going to own them, how are you going to control their rental units, which are all very good questions. The way I'd like to present it this time is instead of doing amended covenants, which is a process, of course, it would be to put an additional covenant on it that would restrict the two units on the property. Two B rentals require them that they have rental permits, which the town now has a rental permit process that somebody would, would have to have in this case. And you also had the question of whether the HOA would use it or own the property or could it be a private entity? In this case, the applicant has represented it would be a private entity that would own the rental unit.
Is there a way of getting a work session or something on this? Because this thing is so old and it's changed hands and it's gone through bankruptcy and it's gone through so many issues. Is there any, is it necessitate perhaps a full review or at least a refresher, of course?
Is there someone here for this?
Yeah, Joe Lombardi.
Oh, Joe.
Yeah.
Oh.
Joe Lombardi from the ring group for the applicants.
Who are the applicants now?
The applicant is 68 Forster LLC. They purchased the property, which was in default, trying to finish the project.
And you have the principles on the LLC, right?
I do not have them with me, but I
I know, I mean, you're representing, you're representing them.
Yes.
Yeah.
And their plan is to have a 24-unit, is where are they with the state attorney general's office on the condominium plan?
They actually, I think it was approved as a 24-unit, but they've eliminated some units. So I believe it's down to 21. They eliminated two units and they combined unit one and two into one unit.
So it's a 21-unit and then plus, plus two rentals or a 21-unit, 19 condos, two rentals?
That's correct, 19 condos and two rentals.
19 condos, two rentals. And the two rentals are owned as condominiums that are allowed to be rented out? Or the two rentals, rental units owned by the HOA or how is the ownership on the rental units?
The rental units, excuse me, will be condominium, will be sold as condominium units. They'll be owned privately, but they'll be limited to just rentals.
So I, as private owner, would say, I want to buy that condo unit. I understand that I'm not going to live in that condo unit full-time. There's going to be restriction on that, that that condo unit I buy in full knowledge that all I am doing is renting this out.
That's correct.
It's rental in perpetuity?
That's what he's saying.
Yes.
The code required it.
That's required by the code.
The code, okay.
The town?
Town code.
Town code. And what was that given as, what was the arrangement?
Allen's Acres was a hotel and I guess when the town went through the process to allow this type of conversion, they wanted to keep some rental units available and not lose them all.
So this is pursuant to a PDD?
Special exception use.
Wasn't a PDD, I thought so too, but it wasn't a PDD.
Okay, I was just trying to
I know.
I'm trying to piece this together.
It would have been a PDD.
Yeah, feels like it would have been a PDD.
It's just such an odd
Because it's an odd thing to do.
So year-round rentals would not be allowed?
A motel when there was tours.
No, no, I think they're limited to the amount of time. I'm not exactly sure how long
That's a really good question.
That's a very important question. So is it yearly rental or is it limited?
It's transient or is it transient rental?
My understanding is it's transient rental.
Minimum two weeks, right, by town code.
That's
And so therefore And a maximum of what?
I have to check the town code, I'm not
Well, I don't think there's a maximum on the town code, it's just a minimum of two weeks.
Okay.
So you could have a four-year rental?
So this would prevent me from purchasing the condo and renting it to my son?
I don't know, it's a good question.
And if you own it, can you use it all summer and then rent it out the rest of the year?
I don't know. That's what I was wondering.
There's a rental permit process and in the building department that they would have to comply.
That was the question I had, Kathleen. I really, I was very confused when this came up the last time. Because there's two ways of defining a rental. You can have a house that is a rental house with a house itself is, is for, you know, that you could have three families or two families. You can have like a two-family, I've bought and sold some of the, not personally, but represented people who have a three-family house, which means that they don't need a rental permit because they can allow three distinct families to have the unit.
But that's not
And you don't need a permit.
Right, but that's not what's suggested here. I mean, you would need a permit if you had an accessory apartment
Right.
or just a rental perm, you know, a straight rental.
Okay, so this would need a straight rental?
Yeah.
Okay.
And a permit each time you rent it.
Yeah, yeah. So to Craig's question, could you buy the condo and rent it to your family member?
I believe the application for the building permit, you would be allowed to do that, but you would be attesting that you're, you know, the circumstances and that you're charging and the circumstances under which you're renting it. I can get a copy of that application.
I'm just trying to understand how this is happening.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, we've never seen this before.
Yeah, and that's, and it seems that the intent was to keep up some type of
Transient.
Transient, to keep customers and business coming into the area. So the type of rental it is would be very important. The location of the rental units within the development?
They're two waterfront units.
Yeah, they're actually nice. I would think, I haven't seen the inside, but just from a
Location.
Location perspective, it seems like they would be prime.
So that is our action here to designate these two rental units?
Yeah.
And to seek some further clarification, Joe, you'll help us out, get some answers on the questions?
I will try. We're just trying to comply with the town condition. So if the town is working through how these things are supposed to be done, because I'm not sure that it's been done before. So we're all working on this together to
Figure it out.
Yeah.
Okay, Joe, can I ask again?
Sure.
I'm sorry, because I'm really trying to wrap my brain around it. How complete is the project?
We are finishing up an as-built survey. It's, it's gone to the town engineer, he wanted some additional information. We got that information, we have to add that to the survey. And then that part will be done. We have approval for the health department. So once we get the as-built done, I think we'd be in a position to start applying for COs.
So you would be, you're actually within striking distance of selling the units or COs?
That's correct.
And this is one of the steps that's holding up the prevention of you going to that next step?
Right, and just so you know, the lots, units three and four are not close to being ready yet.
Okay, but you need to designate them.
But, yes.
Is there anything else outside of the normal that we are going to be seeing on this?
I'm not aware of anything.
No, it's pretty much towards the end. I just wanted to make sure the paperwork, you know, we were up to date and this was one of the issues I brought up.
Site plan in terms of lighting and all that, has this happened?
It's been installed, all per plan. All the landscaping, the exterior work is actually substantially done. I think the interiors may not be completed, which is what he's talking about.
Should we be looking, Chair, at the
At those two units?
At the site plan and what's been done and what's, since it's changed, ownership and
When did we see it last?
I actually don't have that information in front of me. It complies with your approval.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I was not here.
I certainly wasn't here and he was, certainly wasn't here.
Okay, so maybe we need to have a work session on this to bring the board up to date.
Okay.
If we're going to be approving things, we need to know what we're looking at. So let's schedule it, schedule it.
Do you know which board or which town agency mandated the two rentals?
I don't know.
The town board.
Town board.
Town board.
The town board said
Should they not then define what the rental policy should be on these two?
No. It was, at the time of the condo conversion law, so there's a condo conversion law, 330-155, I think, which allowed the, which allowed the hotels to be converted over or multifamilies to be converted over to these condos. Because part of this is an H, I'm sorry, RWB, that's where the requirement for the rental came in. If it was just zoned residential, it wouldn't have had a rental component to it. But behalf of the properties, RWB, and that's where the two rental units came into
But no clarification stands as to what a rental is?
No, and, but since then, we've gotten a little bit, Tom's gotten more savvy where we have a rental process, which is great. So we have a mechanism to control it. Even when they put the requirements in, they didn't. They didn't have anybody checking whether this would be a rental, but now we do. Somebody can inspect it, making sure before they issue a rental permit that the property is safe and secure.
So my understanding, and please correct me, jump in and correct me if I'm wrong, is that the reason why it originated, town board, because it was a zoning change, correct? Is that why their initial involvement was
It's in RWB, isn't it?
The zone, the lot is zoned, RWB
RWB, so the town wants to preserve rental units in RWB.
R20.
B and R20. They provided a special exception criteria to do a condo conversion.
By their rights under the conversion, the statute regarding conversions or you know what I'm trying to understand?
So the town board merely legislated the special exception standards?
Correct.
The planning board approved all of this.
What year was, we don't know what year it was, that's why we're
This year's? Oh, yeah, it was approved originally in 2008 and you have seen it since then as modifications, extensions.
2008, can you tell me the code, 330?
155, I think.
Yes, it's 155.
330, 158, so the legislative intent for this code is all in there?
Correct.
We'll know why they're doing it relating to RWB.
I forget, my page is swapped in.
Okay.
Really
It's online.
I know, but so I still, at this point, I'm asking, I don't know if you think it's appropriate, if we can have a work session, so we get some history.
Yeah.
What was changed, what hasn't been changed, what, look at the
We can have pictures of the site too.
Yeah.
If you feel that way.
We could go visit it.
In technique, it's, it's a little overgrown, but everything else was lovely.
I got, yeah, I think stepping on it would be a problem right now.
Okay, so our action now is to designate the two units
Right.
and to schedule a work session sometime in the fall, maybe September.
I would feel comfortable with that.
Okay.
Okay, prior to any releases, any COs, you want a work session?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
So we'll do the two rental units now, they're nicely located. Can I have a motion to, motion by Craig, second by Gloria, all in favor?
I
Opposed extensions, five in favor, one absent.
I can admit that I was in them 100 years ago because I'm a job site junkie and when they had an open house with the previous owners, so they were actually quite nice.
Yeah.
So Joe, you'll be learning with us in terms of the work session, okay?
Yep, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
The last item is the Bruchhampton Commons, TJ Maxx, is that all clear or?
Nope.
No.
Poor Mike sitting here. Poor Mike.
Poor Mike.
You've been with us the whole day.
This is a quick one.
And we've been nice to you today.
We always are nice.
So as you know, TJ Maxx expansion is being constructed in the rear of this property at the time. There's going to be a parking lot expansion back here, and currently, I'm just going to zoom in a little bit more, so maybe we can see it. Currently, here is a water tower. The applicant is proposing to have that removed at this time, which I think is an easy lift to, to remove that structure, which is not necessary or associated with any of the improvements. So this would be a modification, clarification to remove the water tower.
I actually thought that was part of the original application.
Well, they denied it. I thought I had heard that.
Okay, so maybe I'm just remembering what you said, Jackie.
Well, what happened is that, and I can show you the plan, but there was a proposal. If you wanted additional parking to be installed through land banking, then the water tower would be removed. So that's where, that's probably your memory of that. But this is just a clarification. I'm not quite sure if I wrote a resolution.
So are we going, so to demolish it is fine, but are we going to be gaining any parking spaces here? Which I think we can use.
Michael Shiano, I'm from Intersigns on behalf of the applicant. Right now, there's no proposal to add any of the land bank parking that was approved as part of the original site plan application. None of that is contemplated as part of this. What had happened was initially, the proposal came to us to say, can we demolish the water tower? And I went to the building department to go and talk to them about it, and the building department said you need site plan approval. So I went and spoke with Claire, and Claire said, and so essentially that's why we are here, is to make sure that the planning board has actually approved the fact that it is gone.
Happy.
And just so that you know, when the water tower is removed, it's just going to be graded to what is, what the grade is around it, and it's going to be hydroseated.
Any, any reason why you wouldn't contemplate or consider putting in a couple of parking spaces over there?
I'm not certain. I know that that is not at the same grade as, the same level as the parking that's surrounding it. If you look at the land bank parking, that actually, that whole area would have to be cut out and I think a few extra space, and it would have to be paved. And so additional work would have to be done in order to do that. This would just remove the water tower. That's just what we're asking for right now.
Okay, well, I think that's fine, but let's consider additional parking. I don't think it's as complicated as you're saying.
I'm just comparing, I'm just comparing the land bank parking with the, with what the plan that we have.
Whatever we can get back, whatever we can get back there, additional parking would be helpful.
Curiosity is just asking, why, why is it being moved now? Curiosity is.
I'm not entirely certain why they just considered it now. It's, it's essentially, they just asked us, how do we do it?
I was just curious. I'm sorry.
No.
It's a planning question.
Right.
Why, you know, when somebody does something, I usually want to know.
Right.
Okay, so I think you.
To be honest, part of it may just be that they have the contractors out there to do it.
Yeah, but everything else is doing in that area.
And it's ugly.
And it's a.
That's true.
And people are going to be going in and out from the back of the building.
Right.
Okay, so, so we modify and give approval to take the water tower down? Is that what the, it says?
Authorized removal of the water tower.
Motion by.
Motion.
By Robin, second by.
Second. Zuccarelli.
Zuccarelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed extensions.
Motion to. No, we don't.
Five in favor, one absent. Motion to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Nice to see everyone in person again.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Zuccarelli, second by Robin. We are adjourned until six o'clock.